It is seven o'clock. We're going to call this town council meeting for October 27th to order. Everybody can please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just a quick point of order. I don't think the recording has actually started yet. I don't know if that's something Mike or.
This meeting is being recorded by CBC.
Okay.
I don't know if Nick, if you can, if you're vocal or not, is it being recorded? I'm not sure if Nick is able to speak.
If it's on CBC, that's fine. I just happen, I'm so accustomed to the red dot now.
Oh my gosh.
No, it's a, it's a good point. Also, I don't think our recording person is here. I'm looking for Lisa.
Oh, where'd they go? They were, Mike's here still.
Oh, nope, he just dropped off. Oh, no, there he is.
Lisa's here. She's having a slight technical issue, but you can go ahead because I can listen to Michael's.
Okay. I don't know if, again, I don't know if Nick is, can anybody flip the TV on to see if it'll run?
I don't get an MTV at my house, so I can't help you with that one.
Hey Beth, can I ask, Beth, can I ask you to do me a favor? Can I let, can I allow you to record it for us since you're on a computer?
Sure, so.
I just, I gave you permission to record. If you wouldn't mind just recording this meeting just in case, thank you. Thank you very, very much.
Recording, alright.
Sorry for that brief disruption. I guess we can continue.
Thanks, Steve.
No problem.
No problem. Okay, ooh, got a little chilly in my office down here. Okay, number four. Proclamation and presentations, we have none. Public petitions, communications, and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council. Two-minute limit. If you're on a device, please go to the participants button and click your, raise your blue hand. If you are on a phone, it is star nine. After you do that, raise your hand, we will call on you. Please state your name and address for the record. I'm not seeing anybody. Okay, that gets us to public hearing items. Six dot one, consideration of a resolution for the creation of the Talon Mental Health and Substance Use Advisory Task Force.
So I'll go first. Good evening, everybody. Mike Rosen, Town Manager speaking. Welcome. And just wanted to mention that for tonight's agenda, we have several items that are actually directly linked to the town, town council's goals from this past November and December. So this is the first, first goal that, one of the goals that was under new, new committees. And if you remember, this is pretty much a long discussion that's been a long time in the making. But what we're looking to do tonight is, you know, have a public hearing on whether or not the council would like to establish the Mental Health and Substance Use Advisory Task Force. Throughout the several meetings, we've workshopped the language of the mission statement, which was boiled down to four goals, four bullet goals. And also, we talked about the composition of the task force, which it allows up to three members each from the town council and from the Board of Ed. And then the, then the five other members as well. And it's a strong preference that the one member be a leader of the faith community. So all of that's in your packet tonight. If you want to refresh your memory, it's on page five of tonight's packet. And we'll have the public hearing. And then afterwards, if council is ready to establish or consider establishing the Mental Health and Substance Use Advisory Task Force, we're ready to do so. Thank you.
Okay, um. Do we, let's see, let's, let's open up the, the public hearing.
Steve Jones, Lady Jane motioned to open the public hearing.
Brenda Felucy, I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Brenda?
Aye.
Cassandra?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Lou?
Sorry, aye.
Okay, Kurt?
Aye.
And I am an aye, so that is unanimous. We are opening up the public hearing at this time. If you have anything you would like to talk about, say, or, or convey to us, please, same as before. If you go to the blue, your little, raise your blue hand. Or if you're on a phone, it is star nine. And we will call on you. When we call on you, please state your name and address for the record. Okay, not seeing any discussion.
Steve Jones, I can entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Brenda Felucy, I will second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Brenda?
Aye.
Cassandra? Aye. Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And I am an aye, so that is unanimous. The public hearing is closed. Okay, now for us. Is there anything? We've kind of talked about this over a couple of meetings. We've worked out the mission statement and everything else. We've talked to Nancy a couple of times to enforce and reinforce and reinforce that, that the staff is all behind us, of Bev also, and Mike. So I don't know if anybody has anything else that they would like to talk about? If so, please raise up your hands. Brenda?
Yes, Brenda Felucy. I just want to note that we did receive one email from a resident that had a number of questions. So just make sure that everybody on the town council, like I said, read it or just knows that it is there. I'm going to reiterate my concerns here. The, it seems redundant to me to have up to three members of the town council during research to give recommendations to the town council themselves. And looking at this, three quarters of the work could possibly be done, especially during the time of a pandemic, over email by just asking the town manager to send emails to his department heads and, and ask for a lot of this information. I'm concerned, again, because we're in the middle of a pandemic, that we will not be able to meet effectively and collect all the information that's under number three. And because, again, the pandemic, our department heads and our resources are very taxed right now, taking care of their response recovery. So while I believe all of this is vital information to collect, I think we can create, or that we can collect all of the information we need without having to create a task force, just by listening to our department heads. And I, I believe that what we're going to find is that we don't have enough equity invested in things like social workers, human resources, and other programs for youth who are at risk. And it's been a theme that we've been talking about for years. So that's my input on it.
Thank you. Steve, your hand was up, but now it's down. Is it supposed to be down or is it?
Yeah, yeah, no, I put it down. I'm, I'm all set for now.
Okay, Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that, that the, one of the statements from Councilwoman Felucy pretty much says it all, that we've been talking about this for years. The town has been talking about something like this for years, the need for something to be done. And I think this is a perfect opportunity for us to get it done. I think that by passing this, passing this act today will allow us to move forward with that. That I think it will be something where, that acknowledging that we're in the pan, in the middle of a pandemic, or hopefully towards the end of a pandemic, that this is just the beginning, that, that we still need to go forward. We still need to staff this, this, this group, the task force. We still need to have them establish themselves. So although we're, we're looking at moving forward with this, this is just a very beginning. And that I think it is an outstanding beginning. I think it's something that everyone that I've talked to regarding this, as far as town residents, is fully in support of. They feel that it's time for something like this to go forward, that at least to examine what's out there. I think sending emails and talking to our department heads is one thing, but there's meant so many other resources out there that we just don't have access to or that we don't know enough about. Where, when you have professionals that are involved in this task force, hopefully they will be involved in this task force, that will be part of the solution. And know what's going on out there, rather than just speculating what's out there, rather than just telling us what they believe is out there, but actually having people involved in the process. I think that is going to be an outstanding group of people that can provide us some great information and that we can then move forward and act upon, rather than just speculating what, what we can do. They'll actually be able to come forward and be able to put together a solid group of, of recommendations based upon their experience, based upon their knowledge of what's out there, based upon, both on the educational aspect of it, as well as the treatment aspect of it. So I, I am fully in support of this. I thank you, Chairwoman Nuccio, as well as Mr. Reagan, for their, for their strong push regarding this. I think it's something that both of you have been really dragging forces behind it, and I think that it's something that's outstanding. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Lou. John?
Thank you. I respectfully disagree with Councilmember Felucy in the respect that we are in the middle of a pandemic, and this is exactly when something like this is needed. Because a quick Google search will show you that alcohol sales are up over 50%. And we don't know who, who is purchasing this alcohol. We don't know what their use patterns are like. So this is exactly what we need, because we know that alcohol use is through the roof. And we know opioid use is up as well. So, so from my perspective, I think this is exactly the time to do this. And it's, you know, it's, it's enough talking about it, it's time to do something, and now's the time to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Steve?
Alright, now I remembered what I was going to say. I was just going to appreciate some of the, the back and forth that we've had over several meetings to craft the language. My only comment in regards to the membership is hopefully Counselor Lubin, I, when we go through the selecting and screening process for members, that we kind of get the same groundswell of volunteers that we had for the Commission on People with Disabilities, that we may be able to get some first-time and professional experts on the board. And that we may be able to offer a more limited council and Board of Education presence if desired, unless there is an overwhelming desire for members of both or either board to be a member. And that was my main comment.
I agree. I think our language clearly says up to three, doesn't have to be three. It depends on who's interested and what they're already doing and how this would kind of work in with it and that. But I think if only two people wanted to be on it from a board, then that just means more public. So it's the, it's the option of, so I agree with what you're saying, Steve. Don't, well, did anybody else have anything before I go back to Brenda? Kurt or Cassandra? Okay, Brenda?
Yeah, thanks, Brenda Felucy. I, I want to be clear, I don't disagree that we, that we don't need this information. We do need this information. I'm saying that we can get it faster and we can get it with less strain on our department heads and other people who are working with the town if we go about it a different way. So that's, that's my main concern. I am looking out for the people that are already constrained, that we, we don't have a lot of equity. We are on, you know, all of our departments are bare bones. So I think that we could just go about this a lot more efficiently, which would lead to a quicker collection of data and then a quicker response. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. I think we've talked with Bev and Nancy enough and Mike that they, they support the direction that we're going with this, and they think it's the right way to go. So I appreciate you advocating for them, but I would think if they had a severe issue with it, that they would also be speaking up if they weren't in agreement. Cassandra?
I guess my question is directed at Brenda. Brenda, what direction do you think this should go? You said you think this should go a different way. I want to, can you reiterate what you would like? I'm not, I'm not controversial. I just wanted to hear you out, to hear what you think the direction should be.
Thank you. And this is, I don't think there's a right or a wrong direction here. I'm just trying to look for an efficiency. So for number one, understanding the range of mental health conditions and types of substance use that are impacting our community, we can collect that data from our first responders. We can collect that data from what's happening in the schools. And then that data can be kept confidential, a little bit more confidentially than, than with a task force group. For number two, determining the resources locally, I believe that Nancy and Bev and John, or Chief Littell and Dr. Willett already know the resources that are available. And that we could also contact 211. We can contact Eastern Highland Health District and maybe even the doctor's offices that are inside the town of Talon with a quick survey from our town manager to collect that kind of information. And for number three, opening a dialogue with community residents, that's going to be pretty difficult right now. It's a very, it's a subject that, you know, we have to be careful with for HIPAA. It's kind of hard to open up sometimes about talking about these things. So maybe, and also, we can't be in groups. So it's, it's going to be difficult to do that. So my recommendation would be, you know, doing, collecting the information from, like I said, for one and two, taking a look at where we, where we can collect information on three, by getting people together, doing surveys. I'm not exactly sure, again, HIPAA violations there. And then we can reassess, once we have that information, about what kind of recommendations we want to, we want to move forward with. I mean, we, we have our subject matter experts, some of them sitting in this room right now for the town of Talon. So, and, and we're specifically looking at what is available in the town of Talon. So I'm just saying, use what we have instead of reinventing the wheel.
So, so we, you're already saying we have the data on one, we already have the data on point two. So if we already have that data, then, then you're saying potentially that we should sit as the town council and just gather that information? So you're gonna, you'd like us as a town council to be this task force?
No, I'm, I'm saying that we can have our town manager, Mike Rosen, ask his department heads for that information and provide it to us. I mean, it's, it's, you know.
So if this stuff is already out there, what has been, what has been stopping us from accessing this information and then giving away for us as a town council to determine what else we need? So if we already know what resources are available, you know, what, why aren't we doing anything with this information now?
I don't know. I, I have no idea. We can.
So maybe it's potentially because the town council already has a lot on its plate. So this task force could be one that is more directed specifically to that topic and can like branch out into a bigger direction with it, once it has all that information? No?
The task for, the test, I'm looking at what the goals are. And the goals one and two are things that we can easily get our hands on without having a group of 11 people trying to collect it and us wait for it.
Okay, so you're saying, but then you're saying that we as a town council have to deal with that data. But the, versus if we have this task force, they would deal with that data and give it in a, in a way that we could quickly synthesize? Or they would make the recommendations and we would potentially vote on it, instead of us trying to make the recommendations, correct? That, that's all I'm just trying to get at. Like, I'm trying to understand, like, why this wouldn't be a good idea, based on what we already do as town council, having another group that could focus their efforts on really bringing this together? Because yes, we have first responders. Yes, there are resources out there, but for some reason, it's scattered and it hasn't come together into one central place, which is what it seems like this task force is trying to make one central place on it, right?
Well, why don't we ask the department heads and the experts that we're gathering the information from, what their recommendations are? And do what our subject matter experts want us to do.
Okay, so I think we're, we're kind of getting into a lot of back and forth.
I just was trying to understand where, where, what the, and I'm not saying I'm for or against in any way. I just wanted to understand what the against was all about. And I was reviewing what a letter that came in was about, and it seemed to be above and beyond when what this group was really doing. So it seemed, so that's where I was at with that.
Right.
I tried to understand all of it.
Thank you, Cassandra. That was helpful. Um, Kurt?
Thank you, Tammy. Um, you know, I'm going to kind of reiterate some of what Cassandra just said. You know, we've had councils that have the ability for three years to get this data. And we're finally being able to put a face, a, a leading group in charge of getting this together. You know, it's so easy, guys, and it's been done. So let's get this task force started and get some real answers for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think that, you know, in addressing some of the things, yes, we have subject matter experts within, within the town, but we haven't gotten recommendations to this point. That, Superintendent, Mr. Willett, Dr. Willett, he's had this information and he has never presented any recommendations, or at least to my understanding to this point, that we've had other people that are subject matter experts. And that we've been, we haven't gotten anything on solid actions yet, as far as recommendations, since I've been in town. So I think this is the perfect opportunity for us to get people together that can access that information from these experts, synthesize a, a coherent game plan, getting after they gather all this information. Rather than just us taking individual snippets from each of these different people, they can get it all together, synthesize it, and present a coherent package to the town council to act upon. I think this is an evaluation, not just of that, but also what the public thinks that we need, which is also another important thing, because we need to do what, what our public feels that we need to do as well. So it's not just listening to our subject matter experts, but having them talk to the public, see what's out there, and what the public feels that we need, so that we can act accordingly. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, so, so for me then, I guess, what I would have wanted to say here is, what I think we need to understand with the purpose of this task force is, I've, I've talked to a lot of people in town. I've talked to people that have been affected by this, people who've lived through this, and I don't think anybody is disputing the fact that we have experts that are, are paid staff that are involved in this. For me, the high level of this was, I can't tell you how many times I've had people say to me, I didn't even know we had that. Or, what do you mean, the town has this? Or, you know, how does, how does that even work? So to me, this is a chance for the public to be involved, to tell us what they need, to evaluate what the town has for services right now, and to come back and say either, this is how we can do this better, or, or this is what we need. This to me is an overall review and evaluation of what we have here in the town, led by the public. And if nothing else, that's our job to listen to the public. So that's my driving force behind this. I've had too many people talk to me about it and not understand or not know. So if we have resources, then maybe what we get out of this at the end is that we need a better way to communicate it. Maybe we have everything that we need. Maybe we don't. Maybe we need to look to hire some people to do certain things. And we'll find that out through the evaluation that the task force does, and they come back to us. This is the opportunity for the public to be involved, to look at what we have, and to come back and tell us what they need. And ultimately, that's our job. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with the items that we have and the mission statement and everything. I think it's going to get us what we need, and then we'll be able to act on it from there. So, let's see. Let's see.
Madam Chair, may I just say something quickly?
Sure.
So hi, it's Mike Rosen, Town Manager. I just wanted to, maybe on the tail end of this, just wanted to say that, you know, obviously, the reason we had a public hearing tonight was because we're creating an ordinance. In effect, it's a policy. And so what I wanted to say was, when this first came up, if you remember during the goal-setting session, we had talked about, you know, some of the goals that the town council had for new committees. And the idea was, this committee would be sort of, originally was, maybe we were going to bolster the local prevention council, or somehow support that further along in its mission. And when, throughout our discussions over the past couple of months on this, that got kind of whittled down to doing a task force that was mostly about fact-finding and asset gathering into some sort of a digestible database, or something that could be, you know, looked at holistically. So I think, and also, we set this up so that the task force would dissolve at the end of its mission. So it's not a standing, permanent committee. So I guess, just to touch on some of the things that were said tonight, I don't think that this necessarily overlaps with the LPC. But I think that they will interview or attend the LPC to understand what resources the town, and, which is a body that is represented by many entities from the town, the schools, faith organizations, police, fire, EMS. It's, it's kind of a good cross-section of the town, you know, in theory. So I think that this, this mission of this task force is, is more about fact-finding and understanding what assets we currently have. And as was mentioned earlier, perhaps if there's a gap, where we can spend some money, potentially to fill in those gaps with either staff or hours or organizations that specialize in this field, which Bev knows a lot about those, because, you know, we work with them ancillary now. So I just wanted to share that, that about this. I, I think that they run on parallel tracks. Thank you.
You're muted. Yeah. Sorry, the dog started talking. So, thank you, Mike. My iPad just turned off too. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Dr. Willett has his hand up.
I'm sorry, I'm going to call a point of order on that. This is for the council to discuss, and that we've closed public hearing and we're here with the council discussing it now. So I think that's not part of, part of the order.
Steve, you had your hand up and down again? You're like my up-down tonight.
I was just going to make that same comment. I wasn't sure, because we are incorporating part of the Board of Education and the task force, if Dr. Willett just had any input as a sort of staff member to include. That was just my, my comment. So I was just reiterating what Counselor Felucy said.
Mike, since we're public hearing, what do you think on this?
Yeah, I think it's up to the council to decide whether or not they would like Superintendent to speak. You know, there's, really, it's up to your discretion. I can't, I can't tell you what to do on that.
Okay. Well, Dr. Willett put his hand down. So, alright, so anybody, any other counselors have anything else on this? No? Alright, then, um, Steve?
I was actually going to offer Counselor Reagan to make the motion.
That's right, yes. John, if you would like to go to page, what is it? What is the page number? Oh my gosh, where does the page number?
Page six.
Six, yeah, six.
If you would like to offer up that draft resolution there?
Okay, thank you. Be resolved by the Talon Town Council that hereby creates the Talon Mental Health and Substance Use Advisory Task Force. The mission of Talon Mental Health and Substance Use Task Force, create a multidisciplinary team to evaluate the town and community's response to, and the resources available to, address the topics of mental health, substance use, and related behaviors in Talon, and make recommendations to the town council based on their evaluation. The task force will be comprised of 11 regular members and two alternates, including a combination of currently elected officials and additionally electors of the town of Talon. Up to three members may be selected from each the town council and Board of Education, for a total of up to six elected officials on the task force. Preferably, the non-elected members will be made up of interested residents and professionals in the field of substance use and related behaviors. There's also a strong preference that at least one member be a leader of the faith community. After final recommendations have been made to the town council, the task force will dissolve. All public meetings shall be held at the call of the chair, and at such times and locations as the task force may determine. Approved by the town council on 10/27/2020.
Okay.
Ms. Lubin, I'll second her motion.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor? Brenda?
Aye.
Cassandra? Cassandra?
Aye.
Um, Steve? John?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
I am an aye, so that passes unanimously. Um, Mike, with that said, um, I don't know if you guys have had any opportunity to think about um, the execution plan on this. I'm assuming it's gonna be something similar to what we did with the Commission on People with Disabilities that will advertise, like, do you have any kind of idea of the timeline? When we'll advertise, how long it will be open and um, all of that stuff? And then once this task force is established, I think it's imperative that we have a joint meeting so that everybody on the um, task force has a full and total understanding of the mission statement and um, what we want to accomplish on there.
Uh, yes, uh, this is Mike Rosen, Town Manager. Um, I think that we would certainly follow um, the disability commission's timeline. So in that sense, it would be uh, the, the, the posting would be out for three to four weeks to solicit uh, interested residents to um, apply for those position, you know, those vacancies. Uh, at which point we would um, bring all the data together and submit it to the two counselors who are sort of our ad hoc uh, vetting committee, which is um, Steve Jones and Lou Lubal. They would speak with the uh, non-elected uh, people on that uh, panel. And they would then make recommendations at a future council meeting for the total number that are gonna be appointed to this. So again, keeping in mind, by that point, perhaps the two elected boards will decide how many members or at least um, consider uh, how many members they would potentially want to appoint. We can certainly amend that depending on the feedback and turnout we get with um, uh, members of the public who apply. But all in all, from now till when we establish the new task force, I would say somewhere in the neighborhood of six weeks, most likely.
Okay.
Six, six to eight, six to eight weeks, most likely.
Okay, uh, so what you just said uh, kind of interested me. Uh, I'm not sure if it would make sense, I think then for us from a council and a uh, Board of Ed perspective to try to have our, whoever that is on our boards or councils wants to apply for this, to have that to the chairs by the end of November. And then around that same time, if that's the case, we should have an idea of how many residents have applied. And we, and um, look at appointing everybody around the same time, kind of thing. So would it be safe to then go back to Ashley and tell her that, you know, she basically has till the end of November to get in her interested people and decide who's going to be on the task force?
I think that's fair. I think we would post on the town's website, the vacancy notice for the new commission or the new task force with the mission statement and uh, let people have a window to up, to apply and to vacancies at talon.org. And uh, we would collect the resumes and then um, pass them off to Steve and Lou. So I think by the end of November, uh, makes sense. At that point, because that's when interviews would take place on the phone between Steve, Lou and the public candidates. Uh, and to be followed by council appointments sometime, probably one of the two December meetings we have.
Yep. Alright, I will let Ashley know then um, to solicit her Board of Ed members to have uh, interested parties get back to her by the end of uh, November for her to decide who she wants to put forward. Okay. Um.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move seven A and seven B to the end of eight so that we can get to the people, you know, our guests who are here today.
Uh, I agree with that. We need a two-thirds vote um, to move that, but thank you Brenda, I think that's a, that's a good suggestion. So do we?
Jones will second that, sorry.
That's okay. Any discussion?
I don't think it was anything.
Okay, uh, and all those in favor? Uh, Brenda?
Aye.
Wasn't that interested in you? It's a dog tick. Dog ticks don't carry life.
Somebody is stalking there.
Dr. Wallace, you're on uh, you're muted.
I muted him.
There you go.
That's okay. Uh, Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
I am an aye, so that is unanimous. We'll move that down to after eight. So that would get us to eight dot one, which is Sustainable CT.
Okay, I'll start again. Hi, I'm Mike Rosen, Town Manager. Uh, I'm very pleased that we have this on our agenda tonight. Um, again, Sustainable CT was one of the council's goals from back in November. And we are uh, fortunate that we have, uh, I believe both Abe and Jessica are here. Let me just verify, I saw Abe before. Oh, hi Jessica, yes, your, your name is um, Sustainable CT Fellow there. So um, Abe Hilding Solario and Jessica Leclerc are both representatives from the Sustainable CT program. Um, I'll let them sort of introduce themselves and, and their backgrounds and sort of um, they're, they're on two sides of the house, if I could, if I could say that. So I'll let them explain that a little bit more. But they do have uh, a presentation they'd like to share. And uh, in your packets tonight, besides the presentation, uh, we also uh, uh, attached the most recent annual report was from back in March. Um, so just, just for your uh, information counselors, we do have an in-house Sustainable CT Committee that meets quarterly to go over our uh, matrix of um, uh, sort of goals in order to get us bronze certified. Um, and there, it's comprised of a few members of the town staff. We also have a counselor representative in Brenda that attends these meetings. And um, so that's the, sort of the minimum to be in the, the program is to, to meet quarterly, which we do abide by. But of course, really the goal is to try to get points and to do things that would um, you know, be sustainable in nature so that Talon not only can achieve bronze status, which is in itself prestigious, but also to do the programs, they're gonna truly make us a sustainable community going forward. So again, this was a goal of the council to uh, to keep on with this program. And um, in order to proceed, Abe or Jessica, would you like me to make you a co-host so you can share your screen?
I can share the, well, I, I can share the presentation if that's easier to, or.
Whichever your preferences.
Do you wanna drive it? If you wanna put it up and, and drive?
Yeah. I'll, I'll, Jessica, why don't I make you a co-host so that, so you can share your screen?
Sure thing. Thank you.
Okay, I'll set.
Alright. Let me just share here. Can you all see a slide deck?
Yep.
Yes.
Excellent, okay. Abe, we can just share the slide deck if that's alright with you. And I will go to presentation mode. So I wanna thank you um, for having us here tonight. My name is Jessica Leclerc. As Mike mentioned, I'm with Sustainable CT and I'll be co-presenting with Abe Solario, who uh, runs our Community Match Fund. Uh, Mike asked us here tonight to give an update on Sustainable CT and a bit of background on the program in case anyone's new to, new to the program or just wants a refresher. Uh, we also have time at the end if you have any questions. So again, quick overview of the program, walk you through the certification process and then share some of the funding and resources that are available to Talon currently. Uh, so Sustainable CT is a statewide municipal certification program. The intent of the program is to help towns advance their overall sustainability. And when we say sustainability, we mean more than the traditional environmental sense, though we do include that. But on top, we layer on things like transportation, arts and culture, public health, housing, local businesses, really everything that makes a community a place where people wanna live, work and play. At the core of the program, we have a menu of actions that cities and towns can pick from to work on to get points that count towards their overall certification status. Um, there's no one-size-fits-all way to navigate the program. There's really a lot of baked-in flexibility to pick and choose the actions that reflect your values and your vision of yourselves now and in the future. And we want to help you be successful. And you define what success, success looks like. It could be that you wanna get certified next year and we're here to help you along that journey. Or it could be that you wanna do an action or two at your own pace, a year, two years, three years, uh, just to advance sustainability in town, and that's fine too. You define what success is and we'll help you as much as we can. I will not read this for sake of time, but this is our mission statement and definition of sustainability rolled into one. You can see there, it's that more holistic look at what sustainability is. And again, uh, the program's built up of actions, that's really the core of Sustainable CT. Towns do actions, they get points. Eventually, they'll get certified. And just to sort of reinforce that broad look of sustainability, these are the existing twenty-twenty action categories. You could see transportation, planning, land and natural resources and the like. We have actions that fall within those categories. We currently have fifty-seven actions with a hundred, maybe one hundred and fifty, two hundred sub-actions. So lots of flexibility, lots of opportunities to be advancing the sustainability needle in town. It's an exciting time to be sinking your teeth into Sustainable CT as we are adding additional categories and additional actions for twenty-twenty-one. They're not reflected on the slide because we will be releasing the final program in January. So I wanna make sure you see the final. We do have drafts and we have templates, so if anyone's interested in seeing where we're headed, I'm happy to share that, but didn't wanna muddy the water, so to speak, this evening. Each action in the program was designed to have as many benefits as possible, really to maximize a bang for your buck as a town. If you're working on one action with a goal towards cost savings, well, you might improve health and wellness and you might enhance your climate resilience along the way. So you can see here the eight different benefit icons that we've ascribed to individual actions throughout the program. Um, besides the benefits you might receive from completing any one action in Sustainable CT, there are other benefits to moving through and eventually getting certified. As Mike mentioned, there's recognition, this is a nice feather in your cap as a town to showcase the good work that's happening. Sustainability is an issue that people, especially younger generations care about. I care about it and my cohort um, really do. We want to live in places that provide us the opportunity to plug in and work on our values and see our values reflected in our, our communities. Um, and Sustainable CT is a way to, to show a big stamp uh, that this is something that you, you're successful with in town. Uh, we have funding and resources that are intended to assist you along that journey and we'll talk about those more in a few slides. And another benefit that we've heard from towns who have gotten certified is that they're coming together. So you can't do this program alone. And what we've heard, because we're looking at sustainability broad, sustainability broadly, all sorts of interest groups are coming together, various commissions are coming together, different staff, town departments are coming together. Nonprofits or perhaps regional entities working within or around the community are coming together, learning what each other are up to and putting forth applications under the common umbrella of sustainability. So this is our map, just wanna give you an update of where we are as a program. We officially launched in November of twenty-seventeen. You joined in April of twenty-eighteen. So you are a very early adopter, which is excellent. You can see Talon there on the map. We're currently sitting at one hundred and twelve towns who have registered, uh, which is amazing. So we're almost to seventy percent. And this slide is outdated and I'm happy to say that because just this afternoon, we released our, our final cohort for twenty-twenty of certified towns. Um, so we added fifteen more towns. The math isn't gonna add up if you do this in your head, but we're up to sixty-one. Uh, and the math doesn't quite add up because some towns moved from bronze level to our silver level of certification. So it's a little bit, um, the math isn't all the, all perfect, but we're at sixty-one towns who have successfully moved to the program. And actually, over fifteen-hundred actions have been completed. So the, the best practice library is growing. This is a screenshot from our website and one thing to point out, if you're interested, all of the towns that are bronze or silver shaded on here, you can go in and see their certification reports and see all the policies, the ordinances, the planning documents, photos from events. Everything that a town successfully included in their application is up live, publicly available. So it's a really nice um, repository of best practices. And if you're a town that's certified, when you get certified, you'll have everything in one place that people can go to, check out, see and feel good about. So just a quick note on the certification process. You are at step three, you pass the resolution, you have your team, you're working through the program at your own pace. When you're ready, you can get certified, it's as easy as that. Uh, and this is just what certification looked like. It's the good old days when we could be close to each other. We made awards at the CCM, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities Annual Convention in twenty-eighteen. We had twenty-two towns. Last year, we had thirty-two towns and this year, an additional seventeen towns. In our, our spring, yeah, our spring certification cycle, Bristol and New Britain both made it to um, bronze and they actually moved up to silver for the fall. So really impressive work from communities using Sustainable CT during this COVID time as a response and recovery mechanism. So we didn't know what to expect this year. The pandemic struck, that's not happened in our history. So, you know, we didn't know if towns would be using the program and what we've seen from communities uh, are broad uptake of actions that can help make communities more healthy, more resilient, more strong, even during these trying times. Uh, again, we have some updates coming up for January. Uh, it's very exciting. We have, we, we know where we're headed um, and we're adding basically more flexibility, more opportunities for towns, additional categories. It's very exciting. We're trying to be responsive to what we've heard from communities over the past three years. Places we should grow, areas where we need more, more options, so we're building that in. Um, and you are well positioned to achieve certification next year, if that is your goal. And as I've said, we're here for the ride. If you need help, if there's anything we can do for you, we would like to help you, just let us know. We also have funding and other resources available uh, on the website and we'll be sending out updates frequently. And I believe Mike and probably some others in town get those emails for us, from us. Alright, this is the last slide for me and then I'm gonna turn it over to Abe. But just wanna reinforce some of the supports that are available to you right now. One-on-one support, call me, email me. If I can't answer your question, we'll hook you up with someone who can. We have events every month, sometimes every week it seems, trying to provide training on different actions, different action areas. We do workshops, really trying to help with the technical expertise that might be needed in some action areas. We have uh, free consulting services available to towns on many actions. And one that is pretty exciting and I'm jazzed up because I was emailing with the Nature Conservancy this afternoon. Every year, we work out with TNC, some community resilience building workshops. We offer them to towns. We are going to re, redo that, re-offer that for, for now. Um, they're ready to go, we're ready to go, so be on the lookout for that. There are great workshops where communities assess their climate vulnerability. It's a three-hour session, the Nature Conservancy facilitates the session. You identify your strengths and your vulnerabilities to natural hazards. Come up with some action items, TNC writes the report for you. And you have a very nice laid-out, basically climate resilience plan um, that you can use moving forward to, to become a stronger community and one that's more resilient and get some points in the program too. So that's something that's coming up. It's free, uh, the great, really great helpful resource and we're happy to hook you up with that in Talon if there's interest. Uh, we also have fellows who come on board each summer, they work at the Councils of Governments. We usually have two at your Council of Governments because it's a large, large one. Uh, and those fellows are there to provide direct support to the town. Whatever you need, help uploading application materials, help doing actions, staffing at events, whatever it is. They're, they're great undergrad and graduate students. Um, and they are um, capable of, of many more things than I can list. Uh, and then we also have the Community Match Fund. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Abe and Abe, just let me know when you want me to, to shift screens.
Awesome, thanks for controlling that chest. I was testing out some of my PowerPoint things beforehand and it wasn't working great, so I'm glad you're manning the wheel. Um, hi, everybody. Thanks again for giving us the opportunity to present and just for your interest in our program. Um, so the Community Match Fund, Jess, we can jump to the next slide. It, it's an extension of our program and, and it's intended to be sort of an opportunity to really involve the broader community, everybody in your work. I mean, everything that we do through Sustainable CT, the towns do, is meant to be collaborative, involves multiple different partners. It's not just municipal officials or departments who are working on this. It's sort of the entire community is required to be successful. But the match fund is, I mean, it's exciting in that it's dollars on the table. So when we talk about resources and support, the match fund is direct monetary support to take on some of this work. Um, so fundamentally, what it is, is a, a dollar-for-dollar matching grant program that's um, available to anybody in a registered community. So that doesn't just mean it has to be a town-led project or that it's your DPW or Public Works who takes something on. It can be anyone in Talon who has a great idea for a project that aligns with Sustainable CT's work. Those people are able to propose that project to us and then to access up to seventy-five-hundred dollars in dollar-for-dollar matching funds. So uh, I mean, it's broad, it's expansive, like Jess was mentioning. Our sort of definition of sustainability is much more than a sort of the outdated or more stereotypical energy environment. It certainly incorporates those things, but it's really a, a very broad understanding of that that touches on things that all sorts of different nonprofits, civic associations, community groups, town departments are working on. Um, so there's a real broader array and range of different groups who take advantage of this. The way the funding works is unusual in that it's extremely accessible. Uh, there's no grant applications, there's no deadlines, there's no lengthy review periods. Uh, we take projects as they come, we assess them really quickly, we turn them around, we let people get started right away. I mean, oftentimes, this can happen in as little as like two days, that someone proposes a project and that they're out there sort of getting started with it and accessing the funding. The unusual part, well, I guess that's unusual, but in a really good way. The other aspect is that we're not doing a match to institutional funding. It's a crowdfunding match. So everybody who has a project approved through the Community Match Fund, runs a crowdfunding campaign with our partner, Patricity. Uh, the names that's sort of more ubiquitous and that everybody will know is GoFundMe, right? So it's, it's similar in concept to that in that it's a crowdfunding campaign to fundraise for these projects, just that folks aren't fundraising. Just that folks aren't fundraising for trips to Italy or something like that. They're doing projects that relate to civic infrastructure. So everybody creates a crowdfunding campaign where they need to raise half of their project's budget from local community. The other half will be provided by Sustainable CT. So this is sort of where we move away from assessing projects, determining whether we like something. And instead, we're letting the community decide, the people who live there, who know what something, what a neighborhood needs, what a neighborhood wants. Those are the folks who get to see a project, learn about it. They determine if they want to fund it. If the community raises half, then Sustainable CT provides the matching grant for the other half. So it's structured as a challenge grant in that we want to see community investment and community support for these projects. And that's what indicates to us, okay, this deserves to get funded. Crowdfunding, though, it's a challenge, right? That's the heavy lift in this case. Applying, getting approved, those things, that's really easy. Crowdfunding is work. You have to connect with the community and engage them and get them excited about your project. So we partner with Patricity. They provide fundraising coaching. There's coaches who are available to all of the Sustainable CT-approved projects. And then they have toolkits and resources and guides. So folks, when they lead a project, aren't unknown. They get a lot of support. Let's jump to the next one, Jess. Okay, so here's what this looks like so far. We launched the program in September of 2019. So we're just about a year in. There's, I think, 91 projects right now. Some of these slides might be a little bit out of date. And over 32, almost 3,300 donors to projects. So there's been, and we'll see some slides that show maps of the donors, which is really fun. But there's been really broad engagement from residents all over Connecticut who are getting excited about these projects and contributing to them. This bottom bullet here is actually outdated. We crossed the $1 million investment in community projects last Friday. It's actually at $1,030,000 now. So it's right around 50% from community, 50% from Sustainable CT. Sometimes projects shoot over their goal, people get excited and they raise more. So that's why you see the disparity there with additional dollars from community donations. And then the the map on the right shows where the projects have taken place so far. These projects range, right? Some of them can be as little as a thousand bucks where somebody says, hey, I have this great idea. I want to do a pollinator garden. And then they could be as large as 15,000 where they're building raised beds. They're doing a multimodal transportation infrastructure and things like that. So they really do run the gamut. The average budget so far has been about $15,000. So that would mean that projects crowdfund 7,500. They received 7,500 in matching grant from us. Next one, Jess. So this is just a little bit more. I won't read all those towns to you because it's going to take a long time. But 53 towns have projects so far. And I think one of the neat things to highlight here, so as you look through this, you'll see the towns that have parentheses next to them. That means there's numerous projects. So Hartford's got 12, New Haven has 17. I think West Hartford has five. One of the things that we've seen is that when a group leads a project in a city or town, it often then leads to other groups hearing about it, looking at it and saying, hey, we can do this too. So it's sort of fun to see that it's contagious where a group sees, you know, someone takes something into their own hands. They say, we're going to go out there, we're going to do this, we're going to make it happen. And then other groups get involved in the work from seeing the crowdfunding campaign and they decide to do something too. Which is sort of the point of this, right? We want community to be taking the lead on these things and taking action into their own hands. Next one, Jess. So here's where donors have come from. Like I said, it's closer to 3,300 donors. This is based on zip codes. So you can see on the map here, it's pretty expansive. People are donating from all over the state. Even when there's not a project in their town, lots of people are still contributing to it. The median donation's small. It's 50 bucks. So these really are your projects that are funded by normal people, just contributing small dollars, but in large numbers of people and making this stuff happen. If we jump onto the next slide, I think that'll show the national map. So one of the neat things is that this is intended to be a local program. I mean, the people who contribute to a crowdfunding campaign for something local are predominantly going to be people who live there, who have family there. But we all have networks that expand outside of that, colleagues, friends, family. So donations do come in from all over the place. If we expanded this map out to the international one, there are donations from, I think I saw one from Pakistan the other day. There's some from Mexico, a Caribbean island that I can't identify because it's too far out. But so it is fun to see that contributions are really coming in from all over the place. Next one. We can skip this. I think that's a little bit too detailed. But fundamentally, for those of you who are familiar with a crowdfunding campaign, that's how it works. It's the same process as any standard crowdfunding campaign. This is what it looks like, though. So everyone who has a project approved, the project posts to the Patricity slash Sustainable CT page. So everyone knows that it's sort of part of this larger program. It has the labels there in blue that you see that say, supported by Sustainable CT, eligible for a matching grant from us. Like all crowdfunding platforms, you have a fundraising goal and the temperature bar to show how far you've come. All the donors are publicly displayed so long as they want to be, and you have a crowdfunding deadline. So you sort of, you set this up, folks edit the information how they want, but there's a lot of transparency for donors and a lot of information. Next one, Jess. So I think I've touched on this already, but it really is anyone. Traditionally, with funding programs, you'd need to have a fiscal sponsor or be a 501(c)(3) or some sort of tax exempt entity. In this case, that's not required. It could literally be three people walking down the street who say, hey, I want to do this. We should have a community garden. Those folks can propose a project. They can access the funding. We'll cut a check directly to them. They go off and do the work. So I mean, it's really expansive and we have projects that are led by nonprofits, that are led by the towns themselves, others that are led by schools and others that are just people where a person comes forward, says, I have an idea, it's a fit, and they're approved. Next one, Jess. So really, the eligibility is basic. I mean, we, it's meant to be iterative in that we talk through things, but it's broader than our municipal certification program is, where Jess was talking about those actions and the subactions. And those are really specific in that you have to do exactly this in order to qualify for points because it's important that frameworks be set up intentionally and to demonstrate sort of best practices. The match fund is broader than that in that the the projects don't need to align with those really specific subactions. Rather, it just needs to align with basically the intent of the actions. So we have one that's about woodlands and forest management. And that entails forming a forestry advisory committee, working with an arborist, developing a tree plan. That's not something that an informal group in town is going to take on. So but somebody could say, hey, we want to plant street trees. That doesn't align with the subactions, but it certainly aligns with the intent of managing your woodlands and forests. So that community group or that person, they could go out and do that. So it's a really broad sort of leeway with the actions. Projects need to be in a Sustainable CT-registered town. You guys check that. And you have to receive at least 20 donations to your crowdfunding campaign. Idea being that we want to see that demonstrated community support. Next one, Jess. Okay, so applying is, applying doesn't really exist, right? There's no application. You don't submit a form. You don't wait to hear back from us. It's a phone call. So I'd encourage you guys, whether you have a project in mind yourself or you have a group or a person who does. The first step is just giving me a call, sending me an email and talking through the project and what folks have planned. If something's a fit, as long as they have the ability to do it. So if it's taking place on public land, obviously, they need to be connected with the relevant departments to make sure that they can do that, that they have permits and things like that. But as long as they have the capacity to go out there and do the project, once we have that phone call, they have a budget that's clear, they know they can do the work, they're approved and they start crowdfunding. So it's immediate. The idea is that when there's excitement, when there's need for a project, when people want to do something, we're not saying, all right, pump the brakes, wait four months, we'll get back to you and let you know if you can have funding. And at that point, sort of the excitement's all gone. We're trying to turn these around right away when people are engaged and excited. So that's it. That's the overview.
Thank you. Thank you. That was a, that was really good. I don't know if anybody has questions. I have a few. I guess I can start off with. Thank you both very much for coming and and giving us this presentation. But adding the new categories and flexibility for 2021, do you have any examples of which new categories you'll be adding?
I do, actually. And I want, I want to say their names right because they're very detailed names. Bear with me. I should have had this open. Okay, got it here. So the new categories will be inclusive engagement, communication and education, strategic materials management, optimal health and wellness opportunities, and effective compassionate homelessness prevention.
At the, I didn't get all that. Inclusive engagement. Can you say that one again a little slower?
Yes, absolutely. Inclusive engagement, communication and education, strategic materials management.
And what do you mean by that one?
How you deal with waste and recycling, less waste, more recycling. So we have actions like report materials management, data and reduce smart, reduce waste, implement save money and reduce trash, which is the smart program pay-as-you-throw, recycle additional materials and compost organics, develop food waste, excuse me, develop a food waste prevention and food scraps recovery program. So those are, they might sound like big ticket items and some of them are. But we've designed each action in the program to have essentially rungs on a ladder. So if you're just starting somewhere, there's a first step that you can get credit for as you move forward and explore those opportunities. And if you want, I can send a slide deck that we've put together and and actually a recording of a presentation that outlines those proposed updates to Mike to share with you all.
I'd like that. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Optimal health and wellness.
Opportunities and then effective compassionate homelessness prevention. If you got all that, I'd be very, very impressed. There's a lot of words there.
My other questions were, one of the things that I know we've struggled with here in Talon is the, is there any thought around the point system and expiration? There were a lot of items that were on the lists that we had already done in previous years and we wouldn't be redoing because we already did it. So any thought around looking at if people have done stuff in the past, maybe like a refresh or a new education on it to be able to get points? Because we are kind of ahead of you guys on a lot of the things that we had. So we didn't get points for those, which then prevents us from attaining the higher levels.
Yes, absolutely. And that's something we've heard from towns over the past several years that the, we call them lookback periods, that they've held some towns up. So what we're doing for 2021 onward is changing that. So if something's done new within the past three years, you're you're good. If it's been completed prior to three years, but it's still generating impact and you can demonstrate that. Like, let's say you put up solar panels on your school 20, 20 years ago, I'm just making up something, and they're still generating renewable energy. Fine, document it. Tell us that you're, that's okay. The specifics, we're working out the language because what we've learned with this program is that with 169 towns or 112 who are in, there's lots of different interpretations. So we try to foresee the questions before we get them. And we also get questions to try to write out guidance documents that sort of cover all the little details that might come up. But broad brush, we are in increasing the the lookback period. Basically, it's infinity as long as impact can still be generate, impact is still being generated and can be demonstrated.
That's perfect. And would you happen to know when the the new, the resiliency workshops are going to be available again? I went to a few of them, but there were some that I couldn't get to.
Well, the resiliency workshops are town-specific, so they would only be held for specific towns. And we're running, we have a couple that we're finishing up for this year, next month. We've had them on hold. They're usually in person. But the TNC, Nature Conservancy, has figured out how to do them virtually, which we're grateful for. But we'll offer them next year, so starting up in January.
I was thinking of the equity ones that you did.
Oh, yes. Those will also begin in January as well. And we'll be offering additional sessions. Now we've got the virtual figured out. We can run that smoothly and run more sessions throughout the year. Those are free and open, so if anyone's interested, they're, they're very informative and we go deep.
Perfect. And then my next question's for Abe and the Community Match Fund. If I'm hearing this correctly, it can be any resident, any project, as long as it fits within the Sustainable CT broad actions. Does it have to be on town land or can it be anywhere?
It has to be publicly accessible. So it has to create either a public good or benefit and be accessible to the community. So whether that's, I mean, this comes up a lot. So in some cases, this is a bad example, I think, to get at what you're asking. But like street trees, that often doesn't actually happen on public property because it's, you know, it's the right of way where it borders up onto people's houses or that's where it's more convenient to do it. So but that has benefits to the public. Someone walking down the street still benefits from those trees. It still mitigates against stormwater runoff. It still mitigates against greenhouse gas emissions. As long as the project is accessible to, has clear benefits for the public. You couldn't go do something out in the middle of the woods somewhere that nobody's ever going to go to, no one's ever going to see and say, well, it has benefits and that everybody benefits from a more sustainable planet. It needs to be a bit more immediate and relevant, available to people than that, but it can happen on private property.
So what I was thinking of with that is we have a good conservation crew in town. Is their ability for them to like say, we're going to cut some new trails or we're going to work on trails and then do crowdfunding to come up with some new ideas for our mountain bike park or for one of our conservation lands?
Yeah, as long as those lands are open to the general public, right, where they can get out there and use them. If it's exclusive to one group or membership, then that wouldn't work because it's it's not accessible to the general public.
Okay. And then I don't know if you get any pushback on this or not. My only concern would be that if we go out and do something like this, we're going to have a group of people that are going to be saying that, you know, we're asking the public to pay for stuff that the town should be doing and et cetera, et cetera. So.
Yeah, so that was a concern that, I mean, we heard at the start and it's fairly, you know, it's logical why folks would think that. It hasn't come up in that we haven't heard anecdotally from any of the towns where it's been a town-led project, right? I mean, one thing is, if it's local groups who lead the project, then it falls outside of the scope of government. And that's sort of the idea for this is that, and I think the messaging can be, you've got a budget. You're doing everything that's in your budget. You can't do everything. So these are things that are on the wish list or these are things that residents are saying, hey, we'd really like to do. It's not in the budget. Well, instead of waiting around and not doing something, it's an opportunity for people to say, hey, let's do this. Let's supplement what our taxes are going towards and do extra things. So we haven't seen anything where folks reach out and, I mean, maybe this has happened, but I haven't heard about it anyways. Where someone says, you guys already taxed me enough and we don't want to get any more taxes. Because the idea is, it's the community deciding these projects. It's not the town saying, all right, we're going to do this and now we're going to ask you, the people, to fund it. Rather, it's local people by and large who are saying, we want to do this and we want to help fund it. Or if it is the town that's leading a project, it's you guys saying, this wasn't in the budget. We couldn't make it happen. But we've heard you. We know you care about this and want to do it, so we're going to try to make it work.
That was going to be my last question. So if it has to be accessible to everyone, Mike, I'm assuming this would be something that we would have to have on town property or something. If we wanted to do a community garden, that would have to be something that we talked about with the town to say, we want to do a community garden, where would we put it? And then we could crowdfund for that project.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. It would have to be on public land or, as Abe said before, it could be non-public land. But then you lose sort of the commitment of the town behind it. I think it's probably better off if it's a spearheaded public project. And actually, the question I was going to ask, I don't mean to jump the other counselors, but the, does it have to be something that's outside the capital budget? Or does, you know, does it have to, or can it be something where we budget a little bit for it? But this would, this would be, you know, take up the difference. So if we only were able to put 10,000 in the capital budget, can we also maybe do $15,000 from this program on top of that?
Good question.
That's a question to me, right, Mike?
Sure, please, Abe. Thank you.
Okay, yes. So it doesn't have to be stuff that the town hasn't done. You can't just double the town's money. So if you guys have something in the budget that's 10,000 bucks and you say, well, if we had 20 grand, we could really do a lot more. So let's pass through that 10, turn it into 20. That you can't do because it's no longer crowdfunding. The community's not having a say. They're not getting involved. And I mean, part of this is that they have ownership. So let's say that you want to do a community garden. If you just go out there and build it, it might have great utilization. But you also might have tons of residents who just come out back a year later and say, huh, I had no idea we had a community garden. Who knew? And then nobody uses it. And now you've spent 10,000 bucks in your time and your staff's time building a garden that doesn't get used. So part of the idea of the match fund too, is that it's an opportunity for you to sort of do fact finding and find out, hey, what do people care about? And then if you have 100 residents who have committed to this, even if it's only five bucks a person, they're invested in this. They feel like they made it possible. You better believe they're going to be out there applying for the plots and getting out there and gardening, actually. So the shorter answer or the more direct answer was yes. If you have a $25,000 project, the town's got 10 grand that it can put forward, great, you do that. And then the remaining 15 can be funded through the match fund.
That's very interesting. Kurt?
Thank you. I mean, I guess it's pretty much answered our question about fundraising for Abe. Is this going to use or can it be used for, you know, Boy Scout, Girl Scouts, for Eagle Scout projects, Gold Award projects, stuff like that? I mean, it sounds like everybody has heard it. It can be. That was my question, but.
Yeah, that's a really good question, Kurt. So I actually reached out when we first launched the program. I reached out to some of like the regional Boy Scouts groups or the statewide ones. I'm not sure how the the organization works to talk about the program and say, hey, if you have, you know, troop members that are getting out there and doing projects. Because I associate some of those Boy Scout projects as being someone out in the woods, building a bridge across a bog or something like that. So yeah, certainly. Again, as long as it's, it doesn't matter who leads the project. What matters is where it takes place and what it does. So I mean, anyone could, but certainly we'd love to see Boy Scouts projects.
Hopefully you can get a, let the local scout troops know that this is an option for them and maybe you'll get some applications. That'd be a great way to start. Thanks.
Awesome. I agree. That's where I went. I went to like five different people to tell about this. Lou?
Thank you, Ben. Yeah, this is just sort of a general question. I don't know if either of you could answer this. There was the one new, new aspect of the program that you mentioned that had to do with health. And I'm sorry, again, one of those names that has like five different work. So what was, what was that one again?
I got that. Optimal health and wellness opportunities.
Bottom.
So segueing into the thing that we are, about the issue that we just discussed before, the task force. Would that, would this task force work into that aspect of this?
That is interesting. As, as it's written, the actions that are encompassed in that category might not include that. So we've got something about encouraging healthy and sustainable food networks, improving air quality in public spaces, developing and promoting community garden space. We do have an action that's conducting health impact assessments. Perhaps if the task force is going that direction, it could work. Another avenue might be our innovation action and that's, it's something that's in the program now. It's, it's not defined. It's where we want to hear from you, what you're doing. That's not on our list. So that might not be on our list yet, but maybe it could be. And that's where we've learned some of our new actions from the innovation. We've taken them from the innovation examples in the past. So with that idea, when the task force is created and you have a product, I would be very happy to have a conversation with you or Mike about the results, how that fits, how you're using that and its relationship to the program and how you might use it in the application. But I think that there might be a home for it in the innovation action area.
Excellent. Thank you very much. You're, I mean, great presentation. Really appreciate the time that both of you have taken out and that sounds great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Steve?
Yes, thank you. Steve Jones here. This is a question for Abe, if he's able to answer it. I was curious. Out of the, I think it's a slide on at least our packet page thirty-four of ninety-seven. It says, anyone, no fiscal sponsor. I think it says most of the people that can apply for the match project. Do you know roughly either a percentage or just a rough ballpark? How many people that apply for those funds are just individuals versus town committees or municipal staff?
Short answer, no. I, I just don't have those numbers. It's, it's a pretty broad mix. So there's, I mean, at the start, it was a lot of nonprofits who were applying because these were the guys who had capacity to go out there and do this. They have fundraising teams, things like that. And we've been sort of working harder to target informal groups, civic associations, things like that. So it's, it's probably still slanted towards nonprofits being like of the plurality of users, right? That they're the most common. But other than that, it's probably a pretty even group between informal groups, town-led projects and just individuals. I think those three would probably be about even.
Okay. And then as a follow-up, you probably, you might not really answer this as well, but for those communities where it's municipal staff or officials or town commissions that go for this, would you happen to know if historically, if any of them had to kind of go through like an approval process to, to start a fundraiser or is that probably outside of your purview?
No, no. So this one, I think I have a better answer to. It, it may be, it relates more to them receiving the funds. So folks, I mean, maybe internally they've had to reach out to a town manager, department head or something like that, but that would just depend on local policy. So I don't know how it would look for, you know, on a town by town basis. The, I imagine they'd have to at least go to the department head. Maybe they'd all have to go to you, Mike. One issue that has come up before has been, and this has only been in the southwestern part of the state, but where towns have, they've self-imposed a policy that says that they can't accept gifts and a fundraising campaign. The council's, or a grant from us counts as, in that case, a gift. So this happened in Greenwich where I think they may still actually be trying to figure out how to actually receive some of the money that they raised from us. I, I think they managed to do it, but so, I mean, it's on a very individual basis. There's no like state statutes or anything like that that say that a town can't receive money from these campaigns. It would only be if you guys had an ordinance or some sort of regulation on that.
No, great. That's good. And I think that would be something for us to look into as a town, just because I could, I could very well see, you know, like the newest commission on this, people with disabilities or this new task force, once it's established, as well as groups like the Conservation Commission, as Chair Mnuchio mentioned, might want to utilize these funds, but they might want to make sure they're using the process correctly to apply for, say, signage for a new park or a bridge or anything like that. But normally it's just kind of done through ad hoc contributions to the commission just by word of mouth checks and cash donations to the town. That making sure, yeah, we can go through that process effectively because, yeah, I'm sure there are a lot of groups that if we send this presentation or this, even this blurb just about the match fund out to them, they probably jump on it for twenty different projects. I mean, I think there's a, there is a laundry list, me and Lisa on for conservation of projects they want to work on, even signage is not a cheap venture anymore.
Yeah. So one thing about that. So it sort of depends in that we can cut a check realistically. It's a bank transfer, not a check, I guess. But if, if it's an individual who leads a project, we can and have, the transfer goes to their personal bank account. I mean, they're signing a grant agreement and things like that that stipulate that they're gonna use the money for the stated purposes so that there's no fraud or anything. Your, most people don't love the idea of having, running a crowdfunding campaign and sending ten thousand bucks to their personal bank account. It, it's not a great look some of the time. So what lots of commissions or committees have done is the town sets up a bank account to receive that money. The town gets it in and then, so there's a little bit of administrative work retired that would be required on your guys' part in that case. But that's been the way that most folks have done it. And then it also has the benefit of saying, the town in that case is the fiscal sponsor. So there's a little tab on the crowdfunding campaign that says all donations are tax deductible, which incentivizes donors.
Definitely. Thank you.
Mike?
Yes, I, I definitely will look into how that would work mechanically. I would assume that if the money were to come in, I would have to perhaps have the council allocated to the project. I'll have to talk with Lisa about how that's supposed to work. So we can figure that out. But I did have actually two questions, Abe, just very quickly for you. What's the average time that on the crowdfunding, something's posted? Is it up for two months, three months before it's closed?
So one to two months. We, we limit the campaigns to no more than two months.
Okay.
If for whatever reason, you know, someone's down to the wire and they can demonstrate, look, we have a plan. We need another week or two weeks. Of course, we'd let folks extend. But the idea is that if you run a crowdfunding campaign for six months, donors are gonna come across that. They're gonna say, nothing's gonna happen for six months. Why would I take out my wallet and donate now? I'll come back then. And then they never come back. They forget about it. So it creates no sense of urgency for either the groups leading the project or the donors, if you have a really extended timeline.
So at the time when the campaign closes, whatever that number is that's in the crowdfunding number, that's the number that Sustainable CT matches, right? That's whatever that number is.
Sort of. If it's.
Under seventy-five hundred.
Basically, you have a budget, right? Somebody proposes a budget to us. Let's say the total cost is ten thousand dollars. So we're gonna, we're committing, we're gonna match five thousand. You're gonna raise five thousand. If that project actually raises six thousand bucks, we're still only matching five thousand in that case. Just because there's no way for us to administer the funds and know how much we're gonna have and how many projects we can support. If everybody says, okay, we're gonna crowdfund, but maybe we'll raise ten, maybe we'll raise fifteen. So we commit to matching fifty percent of your proposed budget. If you raise additional money after that, it's unmatched. If you raise less than that, the project leaders, the program structured as a challenge grant, right? You're supposed to hit your goal, demonstrating community support in order to access the, the matching grant from us. We're not nuts, though. So if someone sets out to raise five grand and they raise four thousand dollars and they say, look, we wanted ten, but with eight, we can still do this. Here's how we're gonna scale the budget back. And they submit a new budget that shows we can still do it. We'll still provide the match.
Okay. And then just with the number that's listed as the proposed goal, that's the total goal, right? So in this example you have, let's say it says five thousand dollar goal, then you're hoping that twenty-five hundred comes from the, the crowdsourcing and twenty-five hundred comes from Sustainable CT. Or is that, or is that number the, just the crowdfunding share?
It, it's the crowdfunding goal because, so what folks are doing is they're raising half of their budget through the crowdfunding site that unlocks the, the matching five thousand from us. Idea is that it incentivizes donors where they go, you get to four thousand bucks and people see, oh, my God, all they need is another thousand. And that gets them ten instead of four thousand. So the idea is you raise your half, that unlocks the matching half from us. And this is kind of confusing because in round one, Mike, when we first talked about this, it was a live match. So it was what you were saying before.
Thanks.
Yep.
Steve?
Just one other question regarding the, the program, the match program, Abe. Do successful fundraisers or, you know, match programs, does that offer points to, to a community in terms of reaching any statuses or is it just sort of a separate entity to, to the point system that you get for being like a bronze or silver level?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I should have included that in the presentation. I promise. It, it was in the old presentations, so oversight on my part. Yeah, you earn points for these. So long as the town is involved in the project and meaningfully supporting it, the town doesn't need to lead the project in order to earn points. You just need to have provided meaningful support. And that could be that you give public land for people to build the garden on or to do the project. Or that the town supports the crowdfunding campaign by sending out a newsletter or posting on social media or something. Or that you meet with the project leaders and, and help them do it, or Public Works gets out and helps install the thing. So there's lots of, the public support from the town can look like many different things. So long as the town is supporting the project, you'll be able to earn points. If a match fund project aligns directly with a Sustainable CT action and subactions, you would just submit under that action, the normal process. And you detail that, you know, that it was a partnership project, you'd earn those points. Now that the match fund is broader, if a project aligns with the intention, the objective of an action, but not directly with the subactions, we're getting into the weeds here, so don't worry about not understanding this right now. But you submit under action ten point two, Community Match Fund Project, and you state this aligned with the objective of action, whatever it was, and you still earn points for it.
No, that's great. Definitely appreciate that. Because, yeah, I was looking at the number of projects and I was just assuming that, yeah, if it was that way, you know, Hartford is getting seventeen points or Bridgeport's getting, you know, a dozen points that go towards that. And I think for us in terms of the backdating and trying to kind of catch up because you were doing a lot of good stuff before we even got into this as an old CT that if we can expand upon that with the match programs, that would be a good way to make up for those lost points or for those kind of previously earned points that will not be in circulation.
Yeah, that's a great point. And thanks for asking me about that because it's pretty important.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, anybody else? Well, I want to thank both of you. That was a, a great presentation. I think that, that definitely shed some light on, on things for us that maybe we can kind of push out into the community and try to get some engagement. This was very, it was very helpful to hear all of this.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
No problem. Mike, do you have anything else for them or can we cut them loose?
No, thank you, Sustainable CT Crew. Appreciate it. Great job.
Thank you. If you have any questions, let us know. And if I leave the meeting, Mike, that's not gonna cancel it out for everyone.
No, I'm, I'm the, I'm the super host here, so go ahead.
He's the hostess with the most.
Have a good night, everyone.
Okay, that gets us to eight dot two, discussion with Advanced CT on site selectors and economic development strategies. We are all on the development stuff tonight. We are like, this is, this is great. I know we've got Caitlin on from the EDC, so that is, and I think John Crickmore is on also from the EDC. So this one's for you guys here.
Yep. So, yep. So hi, Mike Rosen, Town Manager. I also want to, of course, recognize Courtney Hendrickson, who is from the Advanced CT Program. You may remember Courtney from the Four Town Economic Vitality Plan that we just put out a few months ago. So Courtney is a repeat, a guest on our show here. And so Courtney, same thing as the Sustainable CT folks, do you, do you want to be a co-host so that you can share your screen?
I would like that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Let me do that first of all, while we're talking here. So I'm making you co-host. So just, just for the, for the counselors. So back when we did our goal-setting session, one of the highest goals under economic growth was the idea of having a brokerage firm solicited to help us out with the Route one ninety-five corridor, like helping us look for, sort of like a headhunter for businesses, if that's maybe the best way to put it. And, you know, working with Courtney through the Four Town Economic Vitality Plan, we got to talking a little bit about other services that Advanced CT offers. And this idea about site finders was very interesting because it aligns quite well with this idea of a brokerage firm selector and economic development in general. So Courtney was nice enough to, you know, volunteer to come on tonight and talk a little bit about Advanced CT and overall economic growth. And, and as the chair mentioned, we do have two members of our Economic Development Commission in the audience as well. So I think this will be an interesting presentation, Courtney.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for having me. Nice to meet you all. So yes, thanks, Mike. Courtney Hendrickson with Advanced CT and I run the partnerships team here, which means that we engage with all of our municipalities and our regions and other partners to help the state retain and expand our business community and then recruit new businesses to the state. And I support all of the communities doing the same at the local level. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen here. And I am going to try to find, here we go. And so if you all can see the deck, is that correct?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, great. And this won't take very long, I promise. But I want to go through about ten minutes of fundamentals. I think that will set the stage for getting into talking about the site selection work that we can help you with and commercial property database that we manage. So wanted to just build the building blocks for the best kinds of local economic development. So we always start off by asking communities these questions. So I just want you guys to be thinking about for Tallinn, what you think are the primary assets and the biggest challenges you're going to be seeing over the next decade. In terms of game changers, that might look like additional transit, that might look like some of the Sustainable CT work that we were just talking about. That might look like something at Yukon or it might be something out of the Four Town Vitality Plan that Mike referenced. You are the community leaders, so of course you play a critical role in the economic development success for Tallinn. And I'm thrilled to have some EDC members on as well. So first you want to be looking at a quantitative assessment of the town. And in these broad categories, what we recommend that you look at, so for demographics, pretty obvious, but you want to be looking at population and how that's changing. Of course, the census data can give you from two thousand, two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty numbers, so you can compare the population. The density of population is important to know. So residents per square mile, just as a reference, for Connecticut, it's seven hundred and forty-one residents per square mile. And for the US, it's ninety, believe it or not, because there's so many states out west that don't have very many people. So we see a little bit more usually in the Northeast. You want to be looking at population by age, population by educational attainment, population by household income. And those are all things that you can get with the census. And then again, they can give you the Connecticut numbers and the US to compare yourselves to. In employment and commuting, this is an example, this graphic here on the screen for a different community that we were working with, Falls Village. But it's simply to show how many people come into the community each day to work, how many people live and work in the community. That's forty for them. And then how many people leave the town each day to go to work. So that's the kind of commuting patterns that you would like to collect for Tallinn if you're not already. You want to know where the residents go to work and where the workers that come into Tallinn live. You, of course, probably do know your unemployment rate, but it's always helpful with the Connecticut Department of Labor to review what that is. And again, how do you compare back to Connecticut's unemployment rate and the US as a whole? The largest industries by employment, that's something that we can help you with, with specific data services that we subscribe to with Emzy and others. For those of you data wonks, you probably know some of these terms. It's interesting to look right now, especially with the pandemic, at self-employment as a percent of your employed workers. So that's something I would encourage you to find out. In terms of fiscal health, these are not unfamiliar to you all, especially as leaders on the council. You're looking at these kinds of numbers regularly. The equalized net grand list by share, so looking at personal property versus residential versus commercial industrial, and then that vacant land piece. And then the equalized net grand list by value, the equalized net grand list per capita, the bonded long-term debt per capita and debt as a percent of grand list. All of those kinds of fiscal health indicators that you all are probably looking at somewhat regularly. And then lastly, in housing, pretty self-explanatory. You want to be sure that you knew for Tallinn what the percentage of owner versus renter occupied housing is, the value of that owner occupied housing and housing affordability. And again, we're happy to help you. Advanced CT has a robust research department who can help you learn more about these if you're interested. You're probably familiar with our town profiles. These are the two-page PDFs that we update annually. And you are very helpful in providing much of the data to us. But then it's something that you can use on the Connecticut Data Collaboratives website to not only grab your own PDF, but then compare yourself to any other community in the state or all communities in the state. So economic development at the local level is a conscious activity. That means it's proactive. It's not just gonna happen on its own. Businesses need to be retained by, by you all caring about them. Mary Rose has entered the waiting room. Should I admit that person?
No, I, I let her in. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Sorry, gonna be interrupted there. So it's a conscious activity. It's not just going to, the businesses aren't just going to necessarily thrive and survive on their own. As you probably all know, you need a helping hand to be sure that you're showing them that you. that you care, that they're there, and helping to support them if they can expand or move elsewhere to grow in your community. In terms of the fiscal health of your community, of course, you do care about that. And on average, communities in Connecticut get 70% of their overall tax revenue from residential property tax. That's very steep. I'm sure you probably all, are you more than that? Yeah, so you know, you know the struggle that that is and where you can be doing proactive economic development, which again is business retention and expansion, as much as it is business recruitment, where you can be doing that to ensure that that ratio is as solid as possible. And then, of course, there's increased pressure, as you all know, on your budgets because the state deficits and the state is struggling. So that's really why you should care. And you should also be thinking about your region. Where you define your region is going to depend on a variety of different situations. Sometimes, like when we did the Four Town Economic Vitality Plan, your region was those four towns. And you're talking now about some of the economic development strategies that you can be working on with Coventry and Mansfield and Bolton. And then other times, you're going to be thinking about your community and your region as all of Northeast or North Central Connecticut. Other times, it's going to be all of Connecticut. Really, from the outside looking in, we're seeing that folks are really looking at the regions as opposed to just the single community. So it makes more sense for you all to be thinking about your regional assets, like Yukon, like the highway access that you all have, those regional assets when you're quote selling your community to prospective businesses, developers, investors, that kind of thing. Thinking about your reputation, I'm sure that is probably something that you all spend time thinking about as community leaders. We talked about this a little bit when we did the Four Town Strategy, so you guys might remember that. But thinking about, are you proactively defining your reputation as a community? What does that mean? That usually looks like ease of doing business and folks that have gone through your land use regulatory process. There's another admit, Mike, are you managing all that?
Yep.
Okay, very good. I'm going to continue to ignore it then. Thank you. So it's, it's most likely the ease of your land use regulatory process, your land use regulations themselves, how user-friendly is your town staff when folks want to come in and grow their business or put an investment in town? So that's what you want to be thinking about in terms of your reputation. And again, we talked about that as a region when we worked on the Vitality Plan with you. But be sure that you know that in the absence of you all proactively defining that reputation and making sure that you are attracting the kinds of development that you want in the right places in town, that someone else might be doing that on your behalf. So you want to be sure that you are controlling that message. This is an example of how local businesses are seeing their community and what they really want. So you can read this at your leisure, but essentially, they want an even playing field. They want the local government to create that favorable playing field for all business activity, to be active in keeping track of customer satisfaction. So that goes back to touching our businesses, visiting our businesses, making sure that they know that we care, that they're there, and that they're contributing to our bottom line, our commercial tax base. And then lastly, they say, we want to be in a town where government is strategically focused on providing a business-friendly place. So you may or may not agree with, with the things that are said here, but this is an interesting perspective from a local business. This, of course, was in the Pioneer Valley, but it's important to know that many businesses feel the same way. And of course, you're probably well aware of this, especially the EDCers on the call. But in Tallinn, you of course have residents and businesses that fall anywhere on this and everywhere on this spectrum. So being aware of that is important as community leaders. Some are going to be universally positive about all development. Others are going to have that healthy skepticism. And others are going to say, don't ever change the character of our community, meaning whatever's here today, this is how I want it and to see it forever like this. The field of economic development in general is shifting away from being purely transactional toward a more community-led effort. So Tallinn residents and businesses, I'm sure, are saying what community benefits come with a proposed development, rather than just looking solely at the additional tax revenue from a proposed project. And I'd be curious to know in further conversation whether P&amp;Z members are seeing that as well. But mostly, community members want to know that whatever development is being proposed is consistent with the vision of Tallinn as a community. You're always going to have transactions on certain parcels, and that's going to be the bread and butter still of our planning and zoning work that we do in communities, of course. But it's important to know that it's becoming more transformational and consistent with the character of our communities, led by our residents and businesses putting pressure on the communities to make the right decisions when it comes to proposed development. This goes hand in hand. So what do you want Tallinn to be as a place? So we encourage you as community leaders to be aware when planning and making budget decisions to know which projects do contribute to Tallinn's character and your sense of place. And lastly, I want to drill down on some local economic development best practices and segue into a discussion on Site Finder, which is our commercial property database, which Mike asked me to specifically talk, talk about. So my definition of local economic development, again, we've talked about retention. That's really about retaining our businesses, making sure they're thriving, visiting them, making sure we know who they are, helping them expand if appropriate. Certainly, we want them to expand either where they currently are or on another parcel in our community, so where we can lend a helping hand proactively and say, we'd love to help you if you're thinking about expanding in the next few years. Let's start thinking now about where that makes the most sense and making sure that it's easy to do so through your land use regulatory processes. Business recruitment is that attraction piece, where you're probably in limited resources, going to spend more time thinking about those kinds of businesses that work within the character of your community and let large recruitment projects come out of organizations like ours, who are doing that anyways on behalf of the state. And we'd love to have you all participate in that. And I'll tell you a little bit more about how that works best. Business creation is about supporting our entrepreneurs, so those businesses that are starting out. How can we be a support for them as community leaders, making sure that they have the resources they need to grow their business? Because they're most likely focused more on the act of making the cupcakes or building the app, the things that technically they're very proficient at, and that's why they decided to start a business, but maybe not necessarily as familiar with the kinds of things like accounting, HR, marketing, et cetera, that are required to grow a business. So where can community leaders step in and help, especially EDC members in that regard? And we're doing all of this while maintaining the character of Tallinn. We want to be sure we're not losing that sense of place, that important, unique aspect that makes people want to live and work in your community. What defines your future? We've talked a little bit about this, right? So your land use regulations is something that you actually control. It's important that you understand what you control, because sometimes we feel like much of our economic development landscape is out of our local control, and it's the state and state woes are draining us and that kind of thing. So we want to be sure that we refocus here and we say, well, actually, we do control the fact that we're, we're a great place and we can become even greater. The fact that you can put some Sustainable CT projects to work in the ways that we just heard about. The fact that you can have a great working relationship with your local businesses if you're proactive about it. And of course, property taxes as well, something we locally control. So who's on the team? Of course, you all are on the economic development team, as are your P&amp;Z members. We've talked about their role there with the land use regulatory process. Of course, our businesses are. Schools come into play with workforce and other skill building and technical skill building that they can help us with in terms of what future employers are going to be needing. Chambers are always great partners when it comes to putting on events for our existing businesses and those chamber member businesses. The commercial real estate industry, which we'll talk a little bit more about, they're certainly critical members of your economic development team because they are the ones who are controlling the available land and properties and buildings. So knowing them is knowing what you have available to offer. And then government, the state and federal legislative delegations, who can advocate on behalf of great policy and, of course, for your businesses as well. Your regulatory process really should be predictable and consistent. We've kind of talked, touched on that, but I'll say that we talk a lot with developers and investors, commercial brokers, and they tell us time and again, even more important than any kind of financial incentive, a streamlined regulatory process is the best kind of incentive. They will go back to a community that does it the same way every time, so that they know what to expect in terms of the timeframe, the costs, the expectations that they're going to have at certain regulatory meetings. So they are looking for that predictability and that consistency. So every time they call Town Hall, even if they get a different person on the phone, they're getting the same answers and they can lay out the expectations for a given project. Responsibilities of the EDC, I won't belabor this because with EDC on the phone, they probably are well aware of this. But it's important in a community like yours that doesn't necessarily have dedicated resources for economic development on the staff, that you are going to be very heavily reliant on your volunteers, as you all already are with the EDC members. And you are probably going to have a town planner. Mike, part of your role is probably going to end up being some of these economic development functions or sharing in some of these functions. So you have here the planning function, the future of development. What do we want to see, if any, and where in town does it make sense? Are we making sure that we have information for prospective businesses? Are we connecting our existing businesses to the resources that they need? And then are we making sure that folks are advocating and putting the right policies? And that's, in many cases, you all, putting the right policies into place to be sure that you're supporting those businesses. So this gets a little deeper, and I will share this deck, Mike, with you, and you can share this with the group. So I won't go into all of this now, but you can see the kinds of examples in each of those four buckets that I just showed on that previous slide. And another way to think about local economic development is simply to say, we're increasing value in our community in these three ways. Physically, through infrastructure. Socially, by engaging our residents and our businesses. And economically, by bringing those private investment dollars to our community. So those are some simple definitions of local economic development. I hope one or more resonates with you. I want to turn to the Site Finder database, which is our commercial MLS for the state that we manage out of Advanced CT. It's an inventory of available land and buildings. And the true advantage of it, as compared to a CoStar or a LoopNet, which many of you might be familiar with as a Realtor term, is a very expensive database for one. But also that ours is connected to our senior decision-makers at the state, who are the economic development team. So the brokers and the towns that are using Site Finder are then therefore connected with the folks like ourselves and the Department of Economic and Community Development, who are making decisions on behalf of the state, so that everybody is connected, and that's important. Here's what it looks like. I think it's easy to navigate. It's user-friendly. It's affordable, as I said. I know you all are very focused on that quarter with Yukon and showcasing Tallinn. And so we recommend a few different ways to do that. What I would call Site Finder Plus is a service that we offer that would allow you all to have us put all of the properties that you want put on this database. And that would include any publicly owned properties and then any privately owned properties that are not currently being represented by a broker. Because in most cases, that broker is already a member of Site Finder and is putting their properties on themselves. So what we offer is a handholding to allow you to put, again, any properties that make sense for you, either Tallinn-owned and/or those privately owned that are not being represented by a broker. And then we would hold your hand to be sure that those are on there the way you want them seen. We would check in with the property owners and brokers every few months to determine whether there's been any changes, and we would adjust accordingly. So we have that relationship with you all and the relationships with the property owners, and we've become that liaison, if that's helpful. What you all would have then is not only access to, of course, the database, but also you, we would create a local edition, which would be an outward-facing, Tallinn-specific list of properties that you could embed on the town's website. So the inward-facing piece is all the properties, and then the outward-facing piece is just Tallinn, because that makes it easier for you all to just be advertising the available commercial properties just in your community. I would also recommend, I think Tammy, you asked about taking advantage of our call for properties. So when we send out emails that say a prospective business is looking at the state and they are looking at the following specs they need, I'm just going to make this up, 25 acres of industrial-y zone land with either a building with X amount of ceiling heights or no building at all. And if you all have any properties that fit that, we can look in Site Finder and use those, but we would also work directly with you to have you submit any additionals that we don't know about for any reason. And then you are part of the mix that ultimately gets selected, potentially by the business and/or their site selector.
I'm sorry, Courtney.
Yeah.
Quick question. What you have up on the screen right now, is this what you currently have on Site Finder for Tallinn?
No, this is just an example. I think my colleague did pull part of the Tallinn specific, but this is one of seven.
So.
These are three of the seven that are on there.
Three of the seven that they're currently on Site Finder?
Correct.
Okay.
And I don't know, Mike, if you all are, all already are members of Site Finder or if these are all private broker submitted properties.
I don't know, I don't think the town is a member of Site Finder. So I, I would imagine these are privately listed.
Okay, and I can look at that. I should have looked at that ahead of time. But I can look that up as well. So you all are going to know best, you know, whether there's enough other properties to make it worth becoming a member. But Mike and I talked about the idea that the database is very valuable for you all as part of your website to say, we have available commercial property and here's what they are. So that's one of the, I think, the key advantages there. So really, that's in a nutshell, and we can talk more about anything that you'd like to. And certainly, we're happy to support all of your economic development efforts and your EDC going forward. We did just complete, as Mike noted, the Four Town Economic Vitality Study. And if you haven't already seen that, I, I would encourage you to look through that because I think there's a lot of relevant pieces for your EDC to work off of as well.
Okay, so I guess my first question is, like, some of the properties that I was thinking about looks like they're already on Site Finder.
Okay.
How would we go about bringing more awareness to that or trying to get that in front of people who are looking to, to do development? Is there something that you do that kind of helps push that there? Or is this just, if the property is out there already and it's on Site Finder, so it's already being looked at?
Site Finder does get a lot of looks. I think that the broker community is very comfortable with it. And it's somewhere that we certainly sear out-of-state site selectors and prospective businesses to immediately. So if they are able to say that they want to be in a certain part of the state and they can look specifically at Tallinn, so, you know, we would recommend that those properties be on there. And we continue to do a lot of outreach. We have a broad network and they all are members of Site Finder, so they're working within the system. But we're not doing proactive outreach to businesses beyond that.
So I guess that's my question. Is, is that the, an option? So if they're already on there, is that something that Advanced CT would do? Is go out and proactively try to find buyers for that land? Or is that just kind of organically happens?
It organically happens. Just sort of depends on where they're looking in the state. I mean, we don't, because we're statewide, we don't guide businesses generally to any one community unless they've already identified it. But if they're interested, for example, in that region of the state, you know, we send them to the Site Finder database first. So they're presumably looking at all those properties.
Okay. Kurt, your hand is up.
Yeah, so is there a, maybe, Courtney, is there a cost to Realtors or brokers who are selling pieces of property to list on your site there? Or is it just kind of like a thing? I, I don't really know. Is it associated to private people to do this?
Yes, there is a cost to the broker community, the private broker community. I don't have the cost off the top of my head, but it is more costly than the town subscription.
And just for, I mean, maybe just, you know, if you don't have their exact numbers, but ballpark for what this would cost is a yearly thing, I'm assuming, for the town?
For you all, it would be 600 for the base. That's without the web-enabled outward-facing. That's without the web-enabled outward facing. It's another 400 for that piece. So we call that the local addition. So I think it's actually 1,100 total. So I think it's 650 and 450. And then for us to do the handholding that we suggested, we added another 900. So it's $2,000 even annually to do what we are calling Site Finder Plus. But that's with us proactively going out and putting the properties on for you, working directly with your property owners, if that's helpful, making sure we're in constant touch with them. So any changes are reflected and et cetera.
Okay, and you mentioned one thing earlier about this site is connected with the senior economic developer for the state. Could you just elaborate on that a little more, what that means?
Sure. So we work very closely with the Department of Economic and Community Development. So the Commissioner, David Lehman, who you might be familiar with, and his deputy commissioners are looking at this Site Finder with us on a weekly basis as we review a pipeline of potential businesses that will either expand here because they already exist in Connecticut and/or they're out of state and want to come into Connecticut. So our first per place that we go when we're talking about any of those opportunities, of which, just for an example, there's about 65 ongoing active projects right now, this week. You know, the first place we go is the Site Finder. So if a site selector can tell us even the most vague specifics about what they're looking for as a business, we can say, start with Site Finder and tell us what you're interested in.
Did that help, Kurt?
Yes, yeah, I'm there. Thanks.
Okay, Caitlin?
Yes. Hi, Courtney. It's Caitlin Gordon. I'm a member of EDC. Thank you so much for your presentation. It was really insightful. Going back to something you said a little bit earlier about ease of doing business in terms of the regulatory process, I was curious if you had taken a look at, taken a look at Tallinn's regulatory process and how it compares to towns in our area? If you had any thoughts on best practices that we should be looking at incorporating?
We've done a lot of work in general with a lot of the communities in Connecticut. I don't remember, Mike, if we did a real deep dive as part of the Four Town Vitality Plan. I did, I think we did have some recommendations around ease of doing business for the region, but I'm not sure we picked specifically out anything with Tallinn. I would be happy to talk to you more about doing kind of a deep dive and then having some recommendations. But we've helped communities streamline the land use regulation and the land use regulatory process itself in many cases, but not specifically in Tallinn.
Okay, I don't know, John, did you have any questions from an EDC perspective? Well, John is kind of a, of an enigma on here because he's also on the planning and zoning. So if he had any questions in regard to the, what you were just asking Caitlin from an economic development perspective or anything?
Yeah. Hi, Courtney. Thanks for the presentation. I'm not sure if this is something in your, that you would deal with or... I've always had the thought that Tallinn needs to purchase property. Tallinn essentially owns very little property that we could ever develop or try to sell to someone. So essentially, we're always stuck trying to market somebody else's property. And along with other, other things you've talked about with the, you know, some people want this, some people want that. We're also stuck with the, you know, what does the landowner want their property reused for? And so we're kind of in a weird spot where we're, we're not a town that owns much and anything we own already has town buildings on it or is open space. So I don't know if that's something you guys deal with, but it's always been in my mind that we, you know, we, if we want to develop Tallinn, we need to buy something that's for sale.
It's an interesting prospect, John. I appreciate the question. It's something that we've seen towns take a hard line on in both extremes. You know, we're never going to buy anything or we like to buy a lot of properties. So we've dealt with a whole variety of different communities' approaches to that. One thing I will say is that, you hit it on the head, is that when you have property that the town owns, you have control over what the future use is and being able to, for example, apply for a lot of the state grant funding. If it's a brownfield, for example, a lot of times the state will only allow a municipality to apply for that money as opposed to a private developer. So the town might work in partnership with a private owner or private developer to get those monies. But it's easier as, I'm just a straight municipal applicant. I'm going to clean this property with this money and then we're going to turn around and sell it for development. So there are some advantages in that regard of being an owner of, I would say, very strategically placed and targeted types of parcels that you all want to see certain kinds of development on.
Thank you. And just to kind of answer what Caitlin was talking about, we are on the planning of zoning. We actually have a consultant that we hired that we're working with now on kind of changing our zoning regulations and doing some master plan overlays possibly. And, and kind of, I think in there it said about, one of the best practices is to streamline regulatory process, which we've heard for years is horrible in Tallinn. So it's something we are trying to work on and we are actively looking at each zone with the consultant to try to see better how we can, you know, be more business friendly and, and more user friendly when somebody wants to buy something or build something. So it's, you know, Tallinn's a work in progress at the moment, but we're, I think we're going in the right direction.
All right. Thank you, John. So I have just a couple more questions for you, Courtney, if possible. How successful do you guys think you are at moving companies in? I noticed like you have commercial real estate also listed on Site Finder. We have a lot of open commercial spaces. Well, not, well, not a lot anymore. We got a good amount of open commercial spaces. So how successful do you find that working with Advanced CT or the Site Finder is for actually moving in new companies to existing commercial spaces?
I think the answer to that, Tammy, is that we encourage the brokers to be members because the more comprehensive the database is, the more successful we'll be. Again, it's, it's to our advantage to point all of our prospective businesses, whether they're here and expanding or out of state and wanting to come in, first and foremost to the Site Finder. So that is where they end up and land for the most part first. And so in that regard, they usually are honing in and focusing on properties that are in the database. It's not to say they might not have access to other commercial, like CoStar or LoopNet, or their site selector might not. But for us, that's our main tool. And we are very successful in bringing companies here. I mean, we've only been at it, as you probably know, we're a pretty new organization. So we've only been at it a year, but we have some success to look upon. And I think in big part, the Site Finder helps us with that.
And great. Thank you very much. And then the last one is, this doesn't really play in the Site Finder, but on one of the last Advanced CT calls, there was a lot of talk about some of the smaller towns creating a consortium for PPE for local small businesses. And this is something that I've actually talked to three small businesses in the last week that have all referenced the exorbitant costs that they're finding for the PPE and trying to utilize that, going by all the regulations that the governor has and such for businesses and just how much of a strain it's putting on them financially. I brought it up at the EDC meeting. Caitlin, John, you're both there for that. But I'm really interested in whether or not there's some, going to be some kind of ability or help or guidance that maybe we can work with other towns and come up with some sort of consortium for purchasing PPE and providing it at a bulk cost rate to our small businesses. So I wasn't sure if that was something that you guys are looking to try to help facilitate or it could, could give us any kind of guidance on how we could maybe go about doing something like that?
We are not directly leading that effort, Tammy, but we contributed to the CROG effort there. And they were the ones that put out the RFP for the providers to be added bulk procurement for the communities. So I think the small business, Mike, you might know more about this than I do, but I think the small businesses work through the communities to access that. Or I don't know what other guidance you've gotten from CROG, but I can certainly look up the details and send them your way because I don't know much more than that.
So, go ahead, sorry.
No, go ahead, Mike. I was just going to say, I appreciate that.
Well, sure. I mean, just back a few months ago, specific to when, you know, COVID-19 was more on the upswing. Oh, I guess it is again now. But the businesses through the, actually the fire, the fire department through public safety, they were giving away PPE to businesses at that time. And we had advertised that there was a drive-through that they were doing. But that was, that was based on supply that the state, Demis, had distributed to the various regions. So that is something that had occurred. I don't know if they're planning on doing another dissemination like they did back in April, May and June. But especially with things ramping up again, that's something that I'll ask John to see if he can, you know, put up the, the pipeline there, up the, up the chain.
That'd be good, but I'm, I'm really thinking more sustainability on this. Having it out where they can come and just get some every now and then. This is something that I think we're going to be dealing with for at least the next year. If not, you know, maybe a little bit longer, especially if there is really as much pushback as it looks like for people in the vaccine. So we're talking about this expense being there for businesses for at least the next year to 18 months, if anything else. So if there's a way we can kind of create a consortium with our own small businesses, come up with what the need is, buy at a bulk rate, and then, you know, they can get it at that bulk rate through us. I think that would be something that would be helpful for the businesses. But I don't know that that's necessarily a conversation that we need to have right now with, with Courtney, since you're not doing it.
I will, I will research tomorrow because I have a colleague who helped directly with the effort with CROG again. I'm, I'm, you guys are all CROG member or are you CROG members? Yeah, that's what I thought. So I will just, I'll get that information and get it, and get that to you. Just what they're doing, at least.
I appreciate that. Does anybody else have any other questions for Courtney specifically? EDC, do you guys have anything else? No?
Thank you.
All right. Well, Courtney, thank you so much for coming. This was very informative. I appreciate it. This was, like Mike said, this was one of our goals back when we first formed a year ago. So this was helpful. And you said you're going to send this presentation over for us to be able to review, correct?
I will do that and I would love to stay in touch with Mike, with EDC, with you all as appropriate. So if you decide you want to take advantage of the database or any other support that we can provide, we'd be happy to do so.
Perfect. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can drop off if you want for the night. Same with EDC. If you guys don't want to stick around, you don't have to. I appreciate it. Okay, that gets us then to 8.3, consideration and action on renewal of the Fields and Grounds Maintenance Agreement between the town and the Board of Education.
Great. Thank you. This is Mike Rosen, Town Manager, speaking. So this item is actually something that comes up on what should be a yearly basis. From what I understand, every year, the town and the Board of Education renew their agreement regarding fields and ground, you know, sharing maintenance and between the two entities. So there's, there's some overlap between the town and the schools on this. You know, it says in your item summary that Parks and Facilities Department furnishes maintenance for grounds, driveways, parking lots and playfields that are within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. The, this program has been a success that, you know, the sort of sharing of services. It's a way to provide proper care for the facilities. And so I got involved with this over the past couple of months since the summertime when we, we knew that this agreement was coming up for renewal. So it was reviewed. I believe the Facilities Director of the school and the Public Works Director of the town met about it and talked a little bit about some changes that they, that they each thought were favorable for the, for the new, the new contract. And I believe there were maybe two to three changes. I asked Scott to be on the call tonight. I think he's here. But really, hi, thank you, Scott. So there really were only a couple of changes in this iteration of the agreement, which at this point has been looked at by the Board of Education. And Scott, can you just maybe lay out what the changes are in this version of the document since last year?
Well, yeah, I think the, the biggest change is relative to Birch Grove due to the construction project that's going on right now. There is a, as far as grounds go, there is a detention pond that will be constructed in the back of the new school, which we're going to have to go in and maintain because the school doesn't have the equipment to do it. But at the, at the forefront is really the plowing agreement for going around Birch Grove with all of the portables right now. Once they open a school up again next year, then we will have to go back in and say, okay, now we're going to be responsible for these areas. Your guys will take care of this. It's, it's just something as we tweaked once in a while. And I, I think between Peter and then Paul Russell, our Operations Manager, and Dennis Carr, they walked the fields. They all came to a amicable agreement. And that's what we're here to present.
Thank you, Scott. So it's interesting though, just the timing on this, that this agreement actually only goes until June 30th of 2021. So in a sense, we'll probably be bringing this back again shortly, in a few months after the new year or after the new calendar year. It might be worth looking into if we can do a longer contract term. I don't know that we need to do it on a year-by-year basis, but we're certainly going to honor it this time around because as you see in your draft tonight, the superintendent has already signed off on his side of the equation. So I, I'm looking tonight for permission from, from the council to countersign this and execute it.
So I have some questions that I'd like to understand before we get to that piece. And I'm glad that Scott is on now because I think that'll be helpful. Does anybody want to ask questions before I do? Okay, Mike, number five. I don't ever recall that happening in the three years that I've been here. Brenda, I don't know if you do, but I don't recall this ever. An annual meeting held on or before June 1st of each year will be convened by the town to review progress and requirements of all community fields. Participants will be invited from the various schools, town leagues, parks and rec advisory board to join with representatives of the town council and the Board of Ed.
I don't remember anything.
Yeah, so I don't think, I, this has happened in my three years or Brenda, both of our three, John, you do.
I don't know about it. Doesn't mean it didn't happen. I mean.
Yeah. Well, no, it just says that the town council and Board of Ed would be on it. So that's like, so I don't know.
Yeah, it doesn't, you know.
And I was on like planning and zoning. I'm not planning and zoning. I was on the recreation board last time as liaison. So I don't recall this happening in the last three years. Is there a way to confirm, like, has this happened? Then it didn't happen this year, right?
No, and, and I don't know if anybody with longer longevity than me can answer that question about the last time this has been done. But this is not a new clause. So, you know, this is an existing clause in the contract. So I mean, I'm not sure what to say. I don't know if maybe Mike Wilkinson on the phone or Scott, you guys remember doing one of these?
Yeah, the, the only thing that, and I'm just about through with my five years. The only thing that I have done was sat down, just like we did with Peter. Walt pretty much handed off to Peter, just as Steve Werber handed off to Public Works to iron out any wrinkles in this and then go back to them with what we felt would be a workable document. I don't remember anybody saying we had to involve, you know, we would reach out to Bruce Watt and we, we assumed that he had included his Recreation Advisory Board. But it's, the fields, as long as, as long as they're being maintained, Bruce and his array of coaches seem to be very happy.
Okay, so I guess I'm concerned that we have something in here about an annual meeting and that's not taking place. So Mike, I'm not sure how you would like to kind of deal with that or remedy that.
I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, June is coming up, so we can do one in June, not, not long from now.
All right. Stop that. Stop that. All right. So if, if we can just make sure that that gets on a calendar, because if it's in here, we should be doing it. The next thing I had is 14, number 14 on here, which is the Board will transfer funds to the Parks and Facilities Line account for field maintenance on or before August 1st, as provided for in the adopted board budget prior to November 1st of each year. So that's in three days. The town will submit budget items with associated dollar amounts for field maintenance to the board's Finance Director to be included in the project, in the project. to be included in the project and the projected board's budget for the following fiscal year. The board will include in their own budget, the one time spring, usually April disinfectant slash grooming of the Talon High School Artificial Turf Field starting the 21 2022 budget. So are we saying that this is a new one, number fourteen? Or is this something, again, that's been happening?
Scott, was that one of the ones that you and you and Peter worked out?
Yes, we we approached Peter and they agreed, we have always been paying for that sanitizing of the field. For some reason, it was under Public Works, and then it would get charged off to them and they're under our in-kind services. And Peter said it would make more sense just for them to budget for it, which he agreed to do in the following budget year.
So they're going to budget for it and then they're just going to transfer it back to Parks and Facilities?
No, they're gonna they're going to not only budget for it, but arrange to have it done. So it's it's a cleaner operation. We're not trying to set it up. Schedule it. Peter can do it when he knows the fields are open or when the turf field is open.
Okay, so if they're transferring it to their budget.
It's coming out of ours.
It's coming out of ours. So it's a net zero impact. It'll be coming out of your budget and going into the Board of Ed's budget. And the Board of Ed is going to handle the maintenance of it.
Correct.
Okay, do we know the the amount that is budgeted for that?
It's roughly $5,000.
Okay, and then is this? So is this just for the that one for the disinfecting and grooming of the artificial turf? Or is this for all of the maintaining all of the? I guess where where I'm confused on is I know in the past, we've talked about the fact that planning. I mean, that Public Works does the maintenance of the fields and everything else, and there's no transfer of that expense back to the Board of Ed. So that's not, that's not.
No, that's that's still staying the same. We're still maintaining all the fields. This is simply an operation that takes place. There's a specialized machine that is used. It goes over the field. It I'm sure you've seen the.
I've got kids who play on that field far too often.
Yes. So it's a sanitizing process that we do once a year. And again, it's it's just one of those things that we felt would be better handled if it was in their budget and taken out of ours.
Okay, who currently maintains the scoreboards and the auxiliary items for the fields?
Board of Ed.
So the Board of Ed does that one? Okay, and then this last question, I'm hoping you can answer it. Well, it's kind of like a combined question. When was the last time that we resurfaced the track? That was pretty fairly recently, wasn't it?
I know there were some repairs made. I don't I don't think that track has been resurfaced at least in the five years that I've been here.
Okay. Surfaced yet?
No.
Okay, so I believe the expected, the year, the expectancy of the track in the field is ten years. So, okay. Are we in that period? Are we getting close to that period?
We have approximately three years before it's going to, the the field in the track will need to be replaced.
Well, that was one of my my questions on there. Having played, having had kids play on track on on those fields all the time and still being involved with soccer and everything. Not as much football, but soccer. The field is in really good condition for the age that it is. So do we have any expectation that we might be able to go longer than the ten on that? Like, I can't, I can show you some fields even locally that are horrible compared. Ours still like, it's still pretty good.
Well, Mike, Mike Rosen, Bruce Watt and I walked the field. And while the field looks good, if you're up in the stands, if you go out and look at the the length of the fibers, they are worn down considerably. There are the yellow stripes, which I believe are for soccer. Those are, those are, you know, significantly longer. Some of those stripes, which are are sewn in, are falling off. The big concern is liability. If somebody was to, you know, somebody got their foot stuck in one of these tears, is the town now liable for not providing a safe playing surface? You know, I'm not a lawyer, nor do I ever want to be. But it's, you know, those are things I have to look at. If the field is safe, there are worn spots out there. Tammy, you know, your your kids, like you say, played soccer. The goal mouth, the penalty, you know, PK spot, the center of the, those are the spots that wear out best.
Yeah, so I guess my my next question leading into that was, you know, I'm obviously I'm concerned about the replacement of the field. It's you're looking at between the track and the field. It's probably about a million dollar replacement. If is it possible to do spot repairs that will that will lengthen the life? Like, like you said, I know, I know from personal experience, the goal box is always pretty worn down, especially the PK line. And from a football perspective, you know, when you're you're getting towards the middle of the field, you've got some spots in there that tend to kind of get worn down. So do we have the opportunity to do spot repairs that might lengthen the life of the of the field itself?
The the concern with doing these spot repairs is the length of the fiber on the new material that goes in. It's much longer than the the material that's out there. Is that going to cause a tripping hazard? Is it going to deflect the ball one way or the other? You know, I I don't know, but I don't want to be standing there when the kid takes a shot and he says, hey, that blade of grass threw my threw my shot off. But I mean, you can you can do repairs, but you know, Bruce, while we were walking out there, he showed Mike and I where one of the repairs was done and while you're walking a field, it's significant.
Okay, and then my my last real concern on that is, Mike, I believe I mentioned this to you when you said this was coming up on the agenda. I'm concerned that the original agreement was never followed through on. When this turf field came into play, the seven years ago, there was commitment from multiple organizations to pay for use of the field to help offset the million dollars plus that that stadium ended up costing. On top of that, the money that is being generated right now from alternative areas that come in and rent the field, I don't know where that money is going. I don't know. You know, I know for fact, again, you know, one of my kids played Premier Cassidy was on that field every March. We were renting the fields. NEU was renting the fields multiple times a week. And that's rent revenue that's coming in. And I don't know if that had ever been applied back toward the purchase of the field or any of the agreements that we had set forth when the town voted on it. It was, I remember very clearly when this went through, the plan that was iterated was that this was pretty much going to cost us not much because of all these other organizations that were going to tip in, and there was going to be rental revenue and a bunch of other stuff. I don't think we've seen any of that come to fruition, and that's discouraging from the taxpayer perspective. Also, from the fact that, you know, in the last seven years, we've learned a lot about turf fields. A, you're a lot more injury prone from a soccer perspective with torn ACLs, MCLs, et cetera, concussions because of the fabric under or the the material that the field is made out of and the fact that you can play longer than you would on grass. And that coldness then makes that field harder on top of the carcinogens that they've discovered that are part of the turf field. So compared to a grass field. So I know that the pluses of a turf field is that it lengthens the season of play because we do rent it out early in March and stuff like that. But I think this is something that we're going to need to look at going forward on whether or not we want turf or we want to go back to grass and what kind of payment stuff is out there. So any kind of history that you can provide, Mike, for us to look at. So we have that in front of us before this agreement comes back up about the turf field and the original agreements. Where are the money from rentals are going, et cetera, would be useful, in my opinion.
Sure. I mean, that was a lot of information. The, you know, bullet twenty one in this agreement is actually a new bullet. Ours are revised, I should say. And that last sentence there that the Board of Ed and the town of Talon will will work collaboratively to come up with a funding method for the turf field replacement. That's that's a new clause that's in this version. Reflecting sort of some of the sentiments that you said, there's already been some initial conversations about the cost benefit and also the the desire from the community about, you know, whether we reverting back to a dirt field is cost effective and wanted versus the cost of resurfacing the entire field in two or three years when the life when the life of it's up. I know that Bruce has received a quote from the vendor, you know, for full replacement costs. I forget if it was in the maybe six to $700,000 range. So obviously, it's big money. So that 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 we are looking into that already. In terms of the history, I don't know the exact dollar amount when the field was first purchased seven years ago. I I think it was, I don't remember, maybe somebody else could maybe Lisa can weigh in on that. But the the thought at the time was that three athletic organizations, soccer, lacrosse, and was it football? Football, yeah. And they were each going to contribute $5,000 a year towards towards the towards the, you know, the field. And then another organization was going to do a fundraising effort to raise another $15,000 to basically match the $5,000 each from the other organizations for a total of $30,000 a year. In theory, to go against the debt for the for the field. And I guess that was going to pay itself off over ten years. So I guess the field must have been originally in the $300,000 range. But I don't know, maybe Lisa can verify that. No, more than that. Okay. But but in terms of the funding source, where where the funding is going, I know Lisa said she was going to answer that one. If you want to answer that, Lisa.
Hi, everybody. Just very quickly on on the whole field thing. The original field was over a million dollars with design and architect and all that. We only had to bond 300,000 of it because we had other grants that contributed towards the the overall cost. So like Mike said, it came out to about $30,000 a year that they needed to contribute. The sports teams did hold up their commitment to giving us the the $5,000 each. The only one time was this year, this last year, with the whole COVID impact and everything else. It made it very difficult for some of the teams to contribute. We did get some money. I don't know exactly which teams it were unless I look it up, but.
That's okay. I was told that they weren't, so I'm glad to hear that they did.
Yes, no, they did. The problem that we had was the other side of it where there was supposed to be a fundraising effort by an association. And that didn't come to fruition. However, Bruce Watt rents out the field where he can, when it's available. And those funds go into a special turf fund that are used to pay for the the porta potties, as well as having a person on staff there when there's certain functions that we have to have somebody there to handle the lights and everything else. Whatever's left over, we have been moving to the general fund to help contribute towards the debt payment each year. And it's not a heck of a lot. Some years it's 7,000, 5,000. It's it's whatever's left over. And now, just trying to rent anything or sell, do fundraising, things like that pretty much have come to a standstill because of COVID. Now, if you could please, what was the other question regarding funding?
I think that was it. So you cleared that up. Like I said, I I had heard that the that the organizations had not sent, had not held up their end of it. So I'm glad to hear that. What I heard was incorrect on that. So what you're saying with Bruce is that he does rent it and that money is going towards those things, then whatever's left is going against the debt. Is there a way that you can, obviously, this year is an anomaly, but if you could find out how much we're typically we're typically getting on that, how much of the debt we're offsetting and how much is left? You don't have to have that number now, Lisa, if you can, you know.
Yeah, I can. Let me make a note of it. You know, we still, we're still billing, setting up a billing for whatever is outstanding, and then we apply whatever we can. I got a bunch of stuff I'm taking here with me, so let me just make a note on this. So you want to know what we've received each year from that fund?
I I'd like to. I'd like to understand what if if we're offsetting the cost of it like we originally thought we were going.
We definitely are not. For the most, you know, we're we're doing a good chunk of it, but we're definitely not offsetting 100%.
Okay.
But I can, I can get you what we've contributed over the years.
That'd be great. Thank you very much, Lisa. I appreciate that. I lost my number here. So Steve?
Sorry about that. I was muted for a second. I was just curious. For page thirty, I think it's page fifty of the packet. It's maybe a question for Scott, since the map is kind of out of date. Where does the municipal pathway between Parker Place and School and Town Hall, does that fall under all under this agreement? Or is that a separate parcel of land that falls under the town side? If you're if you're there, Scott.
Yeah, I was muted. I was muted as well. I couldn't hear the first part, Steve.
I was just, I was looking at page, I think it's fifty of ninety seven. It has the aerial view of I believe it's Parker Place and the school system in that in Town Hall. I was curious if the new municipal pathway, if that falls under this agreement or is it outside of that shaded, like, red circled area?
No, that you're talking about that brand new pathway that we just put in?
Yeah.
Yeah, that falls under us.
Okay.
It's strictly us.
Okay, I was just double checking the the language behind it. I was I wasn't sure about the lawn areas around where the parking was, if that fell into it, but thank you.
Okay.
And Mike, the 600 to 700,000 that we just got, that's just for the turf field, right? That's not including the track resurfacing? That's separate, correct?
That's the that's the turf field by itself from a vendor. It's the same vendor that's current that that installed this field.
Right. So with the resurfacing of the track, we may be up towards the million dollars again.
I'm assuming that it's the same useful life that both of them together. I'm not sure why the track the field has come up first, though. I don't know why the field came up and not the track.
The capital plan that 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 the Board of Ed was submitting, the track was in there first, not the and that's my concern is the track is in there before its useful life, if I read it correctly.
Right. And actually, the, well, it looks like we, you guys haven't seen the capital plan yet because that's coming in December. But we did build in some extra money on top of the quote for things like this. So we're looking actually at putting in a number of closer to $800,000. I'm not sure if that specifically includes the track as well. I'd have to verify that with Scott. Nope. Lisa said.
No, the track.
Sorry, go ahead, Scott.
I'm sorry. The when we met with Walt and Peter, if I remember right, Peter had said that that track resurfacing of the track was somewhere in at 300, 350,000 dollar range, which put us at a total of a billion dollars. They were going to, because they typically use the track for their, I won't say 100% for the school, but much more than the turf field. That's why we were submitting to turf field. They were going with the track.
My concern, though, was I think they had that in within the next year or so.
As we walked that that track area, there are areas where, Mike, if you remember right, and we stood off to the side, you could see anybody who used to ride a motorcycle, what they called whoop-de-doo, is you can see where it's pushed a little bit. And yeah, there there are little humps in the track, and I think that's a concern to the school Board of Ed as well as anybody who uses it. Because you can, you know, if you misstep on the track when you're running, it's obviously a safety concern as well.
So because this is my next question. And if that's the case, at this point, is there anything we can look at from a warranty perspective? Because if it's a 10-year useful life, we're not at 10 years yet. And if it's not, then my concern is that we're blowing through this million dollar asset before its useful life is up. So what can we do to kind of remedy that? Because if it's not a 10-year useful life and we're bonding it for 10 years or 20 years or whatever the bond is, we're paying before we're going to be rebonding before we even have a useful life.
Yeah, I I really can't answer. I can just, you know, provide you with the information from what I have seen out there. I don't know. This was, again, this was put in before I started here. I don't know what the agreement was or what the useful life for both were supposed to be. Obviously, the field is is much bigger where the track is a much. Obviously, the field is, is much bigger where the track is a much more concentrated area that's going to be used. Whether that's why it's starting to really show the signs of aging. You know, I don't know whether it's premature wear or if it's just because it gets more use than, than the field.
Okay. So Mike, that's something to kind of add to your list there of things.
Yeah, we'll talk to, we'll talk to Bruce about the warranty and, and where we're at with that. I mean, it sounds like the vendor obviously is looking to, you know, to, to have us consider putting this in our capital plan for full replacement. But we'll see if we can get through the next couple of years. I think Lisa mentioned that the track is currently slated for fiscal '25, '26, but the field is planned for fiscal '23, '24. So they're in different fiscal years.
Okay, I thought, and when they had, when they went over the, the capital plan at the board of ed, I thought the track was in first and then the field was after. So that may be my mistake. I'd have to go back and look at what was on the, the board of ed packet.
Can I interrupt?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Yes, you, you're probably correct as to where it was in their original plan. We are currently in the process of trying to take a look at the capital plan right now. And, you know, looking at debt requirements and we're going to have to have a new debt plan done and everything else. So working with the Board of Education, they sent us some recommendations of how to move things around. Not the Board of Education, but with the staff, Peter and Walt, as to how to maybe move things around, where how things could be pushed out a little bit. And so now the new recommendation is to try to push that track out to '25, '26. And we had slated the, the turf in, in year three of the plan. So it's not coming due like this year or next year, but it'll be the year after for, for the turf.
Okay. So that, all right. So it is different than the plan that the board of ed approved?
Yes. And I'm sure they're not aware of it yet because we're still in the process of working together to try to figure out reasonable impacts on, on the budget as well as debt plans.
Now, Mike, will you be doing your analysis, will we be doing the analysis to look at the, the cost benefit analysis of having the turf over grass, et cetera, and all that before? Well, since it's a couple of years out, so I think you've probably got some time. You don't need to have it before the capital plan comes to us, but.
No, but I mean, you'll see when the capital plan, obviously, we're going to probably build, we're going to probably build in for this budget year, the, the debt service for replacing it in the five-year plan of turf. Because that's the quote that we have at the moment to, to build into the plan. So Lisa can run her debt modeling. The benefit analysis, I mean, preliminarily, we had asked some questions about what the reality of going back to a dirt field. Because there's a lot of variables you have to factor in, remediation, demolition, routine maintenance. And, you know, it may even require obviously more staff hours and stuff like that. So that's all in the model, but I, I, I'm hearing that it might even, it just might be more cost effective to stay with turf. So we'll, we'll, we'll run the numbers on it. You know, Scott and Peter and I will get together and do that at some point, said Lisa. But we, you know, right now, we're probably for the capital plan, we're gonna, we're gonna keep it in as a turf field.
Okay. So is there anything else? Go ahead, Scott.
If I could have just add a little bit for going with a natural field versus a synthetic field, you have to take into consideration that we have to obviously remove all of the material underneath. We have to put a free flowing base under there as far as drainage goes. We have to incorporate irrigation in there. Then, as Mike said, for more staff hours, we have to paint those lines on a more regular basis where the ones that are out there now are actually in the material. They don't wear off. It, it becomes a a much more, I won't call it a maintenance nightmare, but it, it's going to increase the number of hours that we have to spend there on that field. And, you know, I mean, especially when you have high school sports, everybody wants the field to be as pristine as possible. Just something to consider. It's, it's, anything is doable with enough time and money, but it's not gonna, I don't think you're going to get the same play out of it that you would with a synthetic field.
Well, hopefully, Mike, you can, you can figure all that out with a cost benefit analysis.
Yes. And also don't forget, there's also the citizen factor to it too. You know, what, what do the citizens want?
Yep, absolutely. Does anybody else have any other questions on this agreement as stands? Mike, is there any other changes in this agreement you want to point out to anybody that's a new piece, especially we haven't really seen it before?
I think 21 was the, the only one I really wanted to highlight, which was the board of ed and the town are going to work together on the turf, which we've just talked about for a bit. I think other than that, it was just minor adjustments on, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, was it like who's going to be taking care of scoreboards and things like that?
Correct. Yeah. We just, we just nailed down, you know, more definitively what, who is going to be responsible for what. Yeah, my only recommendation would be to follow along with what Mike had said. And now that we've got this new document, we may want to look at doing it every other year or every three years because there's, there aren't that many changes outside of, like I say, Birch Grove School for this year.
I'd like to keep it one year for now, just because we, I've never gone through this before. So I'd like to see it reviewed in June. And maybe at that point, we could change the language to, you know, more years, but that's just my opinion. All right. I don't see anything from anybody else. So what do we need to do now? Just do the?
There's a proposed motion, yes.
Right. If there's no other discussion, then I would indicate a motion that now therefore be resolved that the town manager is hereby authorized to execute a fields and ground maintenance agreement under which the town will continue to furnish services for the maintenance of fields and grounds that are under the administrative control of the Board of Education. And that such agreement shall be for a term of one year, approved by the town and town council on October 27th, 2020.
Brenda Felucia, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Brenda?
Aye.
Cassandra?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
All right. I am an aye, so that passes. Thank you. 8.4, appointments to vacancies, to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions. I don't think we have any tonight, right?
I don't think we have any tonight, no.
Okay, then that will get us back up to 7A, reports of boards and committees responsible to council. Brenda, do you have anything? We kind of just went over like all of your stuff here.
Yeah, well, sustainable CT, I think you heard it all. I will ask that if, there's going to be a couple of things that I'm going to need to add to the agenda by the end of the year if we want to get points for the next summer. I don't know who, I mean, by January, you know, if we wanted to get bronze, if that's one of our goals, there's going to be a few items that we are going to need to do action on as a town council. Some of them are very easy. One of them is something that's left over from the last town council, which was developing a poet laureate and/or artist in residence. We had even agreed on a group to look at that. But then elections happened and the group wasn't done. So I, I guess I'll go through Steve, if that's okay with you. Tell him what I might need to add to the agenda for approvals so that we can move forward on getting some points.
You can send them to me. You just send them to me.
Okay. And then for the tourism, most of the work is being done on the Facebook page for us. I'm working with our partners to get some content. Some of the partners include like the Parks and Rec so that, that I can get pictures of their facilities and get them up there for content. And others are working with businesses like restaurants to get their menus or pictures, again, for the tourism Facebook page. There's no, nothing to report from the state on that. So those were my two groups that are responsible to the town council.
Thank you. 7B liaisons, do you have anything there, Brenda?
Yeah. Land acquisition hasn't met, blight hasn't met, planning and zoning had a meeting last night. And with some caveats, drive-throughs will be allowed in the TVA. And they also approved a sign and discussed some, discussed a dog kennel and what the next steps are to bring it, bring it under wraps.
So. Thank you. Cassandra?
E C C hasn't met, so I have nothing.
Okay.
I couldn't be at that least.
Okay. Steve?
Yeah, Steve Jones, the water commission met on the 19th. They went through some of their financials. I think actually year over year, they're up about $184,000 in cash. It's been a pretty decent year for them in terms of revenue, cost of sales, gross margin, income and cash flow. So they kind of did an overview of their budget. They discussed the College View Apartments on Anthony Road. I know that the town's working with the attorneys in regards to some language. And I think there was some agreement about the main that has to be attached between the development and the main strip. No update still on the car wash. And then as an aside, on the 25th, I believe, Gene Cost, the chair, invited myself and one of the new members to do a brief tour of the facilities over near by River Park. And off of, I think it's Anderson Road or somewhere around that area, just the, the main water tower and that, that stuff. That was a really great informative, informal meeting. And then on the 22nd, Conservation Commission met. They did approve the, officially approved the night use for the Full Moon Hike, which is this Friday. And otherwise, they went over some discussions in regards to coordinating activities with themselves and the, and the Agriculture Commission, the Paul Kill property and the New England Mountain Bike Association's interest in connecting crandles to that park area. The one, Subcommittee is working on having a meeting between their members to survey the area and begin plans for the first phase of development. And there was discussion of trying to do more monthly or quarterly hikes with the commission and inviting the public to kind of know more about all the areas in town. And I believe that covers it for the, for those two meetings.
That's a lot. Great. Thank you. John?
Yes, I attended the WPCA meeting last week and it was a quick meeting, but the DPW director, Scott Lappman, was there. He reported, everything is operational. There are no issues to report. Also discussed the 12 Shenipset Lake Road property at the corner of Route 74, where there is a financial office building going to be, going to be put in there. And there are plans to tie that into the sewer and the water system. And the old gym on the property will also tie in, but they're still trying to determine the, the water and sewer needs for that, for that piece. And this will result in two connection fees. We got a vern and sewer update. There was a notice from deep that they will no longer be responsible for miscellaneous general permits. And that regulates non-traditional wastewater. An example of that would be vehicle maintenance. So the local WPCAs will be responsible for notifying industries or properties that produce these types of wastewater. And then we had, from a WPCA perspective, talking about the College View property again, Scott Lappman met with the contractor noting that they had a problem with the previous contractor and that project is basically at a standstill. And then finally, the 95 Hartford Turnpike project, the contractor there did receive a permit to cross Route 30. He also needs to cross Route 74. He does not have that permit yet. So there hasn't been a whole lot of work done at that site. And that's what we have for that.
You mentioned something that I, my ear caught. Is the gym not going to have to move? Are they keeping the gym there?
Well, they just talked about the fact that it's going to tie into the, to the water in the sewer.
So I think that's hopefully good news then.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, John. Lou?
You're welcome.
Thank you, man. I'm sure the Birch Grove Building Committee did meet last week that we got updates on the building again. That it went, the construction's going better than we anticipated, that things are going along very well in a large part because of the weather cooperating, but as well as the team moving forward at a very, a very good pace. That a number of the committee members had an opportunity to actually go in and tour the facility. And for those of, for those other ones such as myself who weren't able to make it to that meeting, that we're rescheduling it so they can actually get a full tour of the facilities. There were several change orders, substantive change orders that were addressed by the building committee, which included a sewer pump replacement where the current sewer pump is, that the, it was originally thought to meet specs and it met specs, but it was the, for, are the original design. But there were some issues regarding it so that there was a need to, to purchase new sewer pumps. That was at an amount of about $65,000, which was after discussion, was approved by the committee. That there was also a resin flooring change order where the contractors actually went back and determined that there was a duplicate bid that was placed in or a duplicate order that was placed so that we received a $30,000 credit back. So that was good that we got money back out of it. Other minor change orders, two other change orders, which approximated about $10,000. We are still on track that as far as the overall amount that we're still looking at roughly about, out of the $450,000 that was set aside for potential issues regarding change orders by the, by the contractor, we are still well above the $350,000 still remaining in that, in that part of their budget. And that when asked, they, they stated that they do not anticipate going too much more deeply into that because of the, because of the planning that they've done and the issues that we've sort of anticipated in advance. We're still waiting to address some of the issues regarding the, regarding some of the other projects coming up as well as the, the money that was just signed in or approved by the legislature. Since the governor did not take any action, that money was automatically approved. So that's funding that we're now looking at addressing some of the furnished furniture and other things going into the interior of the building, which we'll be addressing within the next few meetings.
Okay. Thank you. Kurt?
I, I have nothing to report, so that's easy.
You're easy. Okay. For me, there was a board of ed meeting on the 14th where they discussed their goals, had a meeting with the lawyer on roles and responsibilities. And they discussed the capital improvement plan, which Mike has, we've talked about a little bit tonight. There was a meeting, I had a meeting with Eastern Highland Health District. Let me just get to those notes there because there was some stuff there. And in that meeting there, we talked about the possibility of mass distribution of the vaccines, what they're putting in place. They're anticipating the health district will get some reimbursement for the vaccines, but they're not sure how much. Once the vaccine becomes available, they'll get a larger allocation and will transition from smaller targeted site process to larger drive-through or walk-in clinic spaces. There are currently multiple vaccines in trials. Many of the ones that were in there have stopped. We don't know why they stopped, just that multiple, a lot of the trials that were going on have stopped. At least two of the trials right now, we have storage requirements of minus 70 degrees, 70 degree storage. So it's not necessarily going to be the first out of the gate, but whichever one will have the longest acting benefits. One of them is one dose only, some multiple, couple of them, other ones are multiple doses. There's a lot of information out there, but there's really nothing concrete. So you're kind of swimming around in information that doesn't really necessarily help us very much. There were multiple flu clinics that were going on. The one that is still left is on 11-7 in Mansfield Middle School. It's available to anybody who wants to come and get it. The medical reserve crew will be hosting the event and they're going to be using it as training for the COVID vaccine anticipation. So they'll have availability. They'll, they'll understand better like how to run a mass vaccination thing. And then, I'm sorry, we had in. And then I'm sorry, we had in, where's my other one? 7B? Oh, we had a Commission on People with Disabilities meeting. And in that meeting, they discussed a few things. Actually, they talked about the Talon Green Accessibility Project that we're looking at. The next steps to identify the scope and then go after the the grants and such. They are also looking at their survey that they're doing. They're looking to get information from the town, from people in town about items that have been brought to the attention of the town that they can address. We knew about the baseball fields, the sidewalks, the ADA pathway, having a commission and then recreation. But they're going to be putting out a survey for residents to kind of go through a needs assessment survey, which I think is going to be really good. It's gonna, they're going to be getting back which topics they'd like to see in that survey and how broad they want to keep it. They talked about the role of the commission in writing grants and finding grant opportunities. And then they discussed the new Facebook page that they have. And the first thing that they decided to do was to do an introduction to to all of the members that are on the commission, which I thought was excellent. So you can get to know the people who are on the commission, why they're there and why it's important to them. So if you haven't liked their Facebook page, go ahead out and like their Facebook page. I expected to have a lot of good information on there. That's it for me. That gets to nine old business of which we have none. 10, report of the Town Manager. It's the second week, second meeting, so I know you don't have your big one.
Yeah, we don't have the written one tonight. So hi, Mike Rosen, Town Manager. I have a couple of things I'm going to update. So one is, as mentioned earlier a few times, I've been pretty much in back-to-back capital budget meetings over the past week or week and a half now. But there's a few other things that I'm also working on. So we talked with Advanced CT earlier today about the four Town Economic Vitality Plan. And where that's the sort of, that's still in its infancy now that the plan is has been finalized. And there is an implementation matrix that was part of the plan. So what what each of the four towns has been doing, Bolton, Coventry, Mansfield and Talon, we've been having a group of, first of all, it's for there's staff people that represent each of the four communities. And we've agreed that each town will have three representatives onto a steering committee that will be formed probably in December of this year. But that's going to help shepherd the the plan through its implementation over the course of three years. And what, since each town has three reps, what I'm going to probably ask the Chair to put on a future agenda is under appointments to formally appoint two other representatives and then myself, perhaps pending a new planning director starting onto the onto the committee or onto the steering committee. And specifically the two members that have been joining me, obviously it's informal at this point because it's not been formalized yet. But the Chair of EDC and the Chair of Conservation have been joining me on these calls. So we are starting to look at what we can do, maybe what's low lower hanging fruit. And what are some of the bigger picture items such as branding and marketing for the four towns? That's all spelled out in the plan and the matrix. But those meetings, you know, of the steering committee, once, once it's form finalized by all four of the towns, I believe will become a public body. There'll be agendas will be posted and minutes will be posted. So it'll be something that anybody can attend, but it's also the idea is to build a bench of interested people to, from each of the towns to maybe swap in and out for these committee meetings. So maybe you have a meeting that's dedicated towards entrepreneurship or specific to restaurants or businesses and things like that. So you swap out one of us for somebody who might be able to sit in and that's the idea. So I just wanted to give an update on that, that we have been meeting. It's been about four meetings now. And then we have another meeting in a few weeks, the week of the 16th to talk more about, you know, implementation. So just wanted to give an update, possible future agenda item. I also, as Lou mentioned, I attended the Birch Grove Walking Tour on October 20th, which was really nice to see from the ground what the the progress that's been made to the school. I'm very impressed. The skeleton is is looking good. They just need to sort of finish it out the insides now, but it's really looking very good. So one other thing I wanted to mention, just next steps on the our fire rescue truck, which was handled at the last meeting. On November 2nd, I'm meeting with John, Fire Chief, and a few other members of the Fire Department. We're having a final demonstration of what a different brand vendor truck looks like. I think they're they're coming to our town. We don't have to go to them. And at that point, after that meeting, we're going to sit down and figure out the idea of whether or not we want to do a bid waiver, you know, why we suggest a bid waiver to council, or do we want to do a formal bid? And if we do a formal bid, obviously there's, you have to add on a little bit of time to do the bid and everything. But if that's the way we're going to get the best deal, it's certainly worth going to do a full bid since it's a big dollar amount. So just more to come on that, that we're doing one last bit of due diligence before we come back on that item. I wanted to end with this and also Sheila's on the on the call. I asked her to be here from Town Clerk's Office. So Mike Wyman, one of the registrars of voters, had asked us to put an e-blast out on the town website back on October 22nd about voting in person during the pandemic. And I just wanted to take this moment to read, highlight some of the bullets from this about what voting is going to look like on November 3rd. So what to expect if you're voting in person? So we're expecting a record turnout for this important election. The number of absentee ballots has greatly increased and Sheila might be able to give us a more up-to-date number. But the last I heard was that we were in the ballpark of about 4,000 ballots requested and about 3,000 returned. So maybe Sheila can update us, but we do expect a large turnout of voters voting in person, even with the absentee ballot that we just talked about. And because of our need to social distance, the number of voting booths in each of our two polling locations will only allow 12 voting booths to be set up, meaning that only 12 people can vote at the same time. So there will be lines and we ask for your patience. When in line, you need to be six feet apart. Masks are required to enter the polling places. And your hands will be sprayed with sanitizer prior to entering the polling place. So please prepare in advance. Make sure you're registered to vote and which polling place you're going to be voting at. You can visit myvote.c t.gov/lookup and that link is on the town website. If you want to take a look and yeah, that's that's sort of the update I wanted to give about voting in person. Sheila, did you want to maybe give updated numbers on the ballots?
Sure, Mike. No, you were pretty much on the money. So far, we've issued 3,700 ballots and we've received 2,900 and a little, a little 2,900 and some change back. They really had fallen off for the last couple of weeks, I think, with all the publicity on about absentee ballots across the country. But now, this week, we've had a lot of people coming in saying, you know, I threw away the of the application the state sent me. I've changed my mind. I want to vote absentee. So we're, it's picked up quite a bit this week.
And Sheila, we have about 10,000 registered voters in town, right?
Yeah, 10,600, I believe.
Right. So that's still a big gap between the 3,000 received and 10,000. So we could have a record turnout. So do you have any advice for the people listening at home, what they should do in the next couple of days or what they would?
Well, I think we're at the, we're at the stage now where if people, they're still utilizing the drop boxes, which is fine. But if they're putting applications in the drop box, they really should probably come into the Town Clerk's Office. We're, you know, running out of mail time. And we also are opening up on Friday from eight to five o'clock. We're opening just the Town Clerk's Office just for absent issuing absentee ballots. So that should help people out for the people that have changed their mind this week.
Thank you, and I appreciate you being here, Sheila. I know you're very busy these days. So I, I don't know if the council has any questions they'd like to specifically ask Sheila. Maybe we can keep it brief. But any, any specific questions regarding next week's election?
Yes. Thank you so much for joining, Sheila. I know you're, you're probably like going crazy right now. I was wondering if you could just kind of reiterate the process. I know that the state of Connecticut changed things in regards to you guys being able to quote unquote, process a ballot prior to. And I've had a couple of questions about what if I bring, what if somebody brings their ballot to Town Hall on Tuesday, Election Day after five o'clock? What happens to that ballot? When does it get counted? And maybe just give us a really quick, high level of what, when you're going to start doing what so people understand that?
Sure. So the the state has allowed us this year to begin processing absentee ballot applications after five o'clock on Friday. And by processing, all that entails is opening that outer serial numbered envelope, but you're going to leave the inner envelope B that contains the ballot intact. And they're going to be opening it just to save time from from counting on Election Day. And then they also at that time can check and make sure that that inner envelope is signed and that there is an envelope in there. And if not, they can reject at that point. And then so and all of those ballots will stay in my vault. They're going to be, we're going to be doing that on Saturday.
We lost you there, Sheila. We can't really hear you.
Yeah, your microphone's very loud. Now that's better.
Is that better?
That's better, yep.
Sorry about that. Yeah. So there and those ballots will remain in the vault until Election Day. And then so anything received after five o'clock on Friday through Monday will be delivered to the polls, not to the polls, sorry, misspoke, will be delivered to the centralized absentee ballot counting place, which is the Art Center on the morning of Election Day. And so anything that they've already pre-checked on Friday and any ballots that came in after five o'clock on Friday will just be totally intact with that outer serial number numbered envelope still attached to the package. They will not be opened and that will all go to the polls and they, I mean, to keep saying that, to the centralized counting area and be counted on Election Day. So no votes will actually be counted until Election Day.
And will you guys be running them through the machines pretty much probably all day on on Election Day?
Yes, yes. They will be over there running the ballots through the machines. And then any ballots that are received, and now no one can come into the Town Clerk's Office on Election Day to drop off their ballot unless it's for a spouse or a family member and they have to sign for it in front of us. Because the old election laws, even though we have the Governor's Executive Order and the legislature took action also, they still remain intact. So you cannot deliver your own ballot to the Town Clerk on Election Day. But I can send you out to the drop box to drop it off there. So on Election Day, any ballots received by US Mail or received in the drop boxes will be held until after the close of the polls where the registrars will examine the voter checkoff list with those additional ballots that were received to make sure no one actually went to the polls that day and voted. And then they'll be counted.
And they'll be counted that night?
I believe the registrars are going to count them that night depending on the volume. If there's a lot of volume, it could well go into the next day.
Okay. And if now if somebody just puts it in the mail on November 3rd, that doesn't count, right? We're not gonna?
No, it's not like the primary where they extended it with the postmark because of the storm. Not because of the changes with COVID. It was because of the storm that we had in the in the outages, power outages. So no, they have to be physically received by eight o'clock and those ballot boxes outside, both of them will be locked to eight o'clock sharp.
All right. So the message that we need people to understand here is get your ballot to a box at this point or bring it down to you. And on Election Day, it has to go into the box.
Correct.
Because it's an emergency situation by being delivered by somebody else. And everything will be counted that night or by the next morning.
Correct.
All right. So we all know that I don't think I have anything else for you, Sheila. But Dr. Willett, Dr. Willett's hand is up. So my mouse isn't working. I can't lower it.
Hi, I'm here.
Sorry. Okay, go ahead.
That's okay. I'm sorry. I was waiting. Am I in the right section or 15 or whatever it is? Is this the right time?
Well, we're in manager's report, but Dr. Willett, you're certainly welcome. If you, I'm done with my manager's report if you wanted to tack on.
No, no, no problem. I just, I have my hand was up for public participation. I didn't want to interrupt your process. So I just didn't, you know, I didn't want to to miss it, you know, that's all. So I don't want to interrupt.
All right. So we'll, we'll call on you first for public participation.
Yeah, when I heard hand, I thought that's what you were talking about. So I will return to my corner for the moment.
All right. So Mike, are you all done?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, that gets us to 11 adoption of minutes.
Steve Jones entertained a motion to adopt the minutes as laid out on under 11.1 and 11.2.
This, this is Brenda Felicity. We actually received a correction via email. I don't know if those were reflected in these minutes, though.
We did?
Yes.
The October 6 minutes? Is that the right?
No, I think it's the 13th. Actually, I guess it didn't have the date on it. It was a change from the Historic District Commission.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That was in there or it's not in there?
I don't.
I don't. I tried looking. I didn't see that it was fixed, but I did think that there was some revised.
I, I, yeah, October 6th was amended. I don't think October 13th was, and I think that's specifically that they were talking about.
So under the 13th, under item number 12, the email was from the Talon Green Historic Society. I'm sorry. It was listed as the Talon Green Historic Society. It should be the Talon Green Historic District Commission.
Lisa, do you have that? How about we send it to her?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So then we would need to adopt the minutes as amended, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you?
Yes, I'll amend my my motion to 11.11.2 as amended.
This is Brenda Felicity. I will second that.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra? Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
I'm an I, so that passes unanimously. Gets us to 12 correspondence to council.
Correspondence, we just had that email. We had the email about the questions for the task force, which was already mentioned. And we also received a few emails from a resident about green energy and green initiatives. And we received lots of emails about inviting us to different webinars and trainings, et cetera.
Wine, we got us a couple for our wine guy, too.
Yes.
What is the wine guy's name, Mike? What's the wine guy's name? You had it.
Klaas de Jong.
There you go.
We did not receive any, I'm not, I'm not soliciting any here, but we did not receive any emails about gold or rice this time around. So thank you.
Hey, yeah.
This is actually interesting because on an upcoming agenda, I think in the future, we may want to talk about going to a .gov platform rather than a .org platform to get rid of all this unwanted correspondence.
Yes. That we have to get on an upcoming schedule. You mentioned that. So we'll figure out when to get that in.
It's like, it looks like Lisa's hand is up. I don't know if she needed to clarify anything on anything.
Quick question. You just referred to that email. When you referred to that email, was that the one in reference to the minutes or something else?
Yes. So we received the email about the reference to the minutes. We received an email about the task force and then the numerous others.
Got it.
And you should have just received an email for about that email. So that you have it officially.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Lisa, if you get confused, just, just reach out. And it gets to 13 Chair Porson's report. Okay, I don't have a whole lot of this, this month, this, this meeting. I'm going to be moving my chair hour to November 19th at 6:00 PM. Mike, I have to let you guys know that so I can change my Zoom. Scarecrow contest goes on, I believe, until Saturday. So everybody, if you have not gone out in the green and taken a peek, go out there and do that and vote on your favorite scarecrow. Every time I go by the green without fail, I would say at least 85% of the times that I've gone past the green, there have been people out there on the green looking at the scarecrows. That makes me extremely happy. So I think we can consider our scarecrow contest a success. So, I think we can consider our scarecrow contest a success. And I cannot wait until next year when we can blow it out to a whole harvest fest. Election, don't forget, everybody, go vote on November 3rd. And as Sheila said, we already received about 2,900 absentee ballots, but we have about 10,000 people registered to vote. So, that's about 33, 34%. And if you're going to vote in person, the voting stations will be safe and open. So, hope to see you at the polls on the 3rd. That is all that I have for now. Gets so 14 communications and petitions from council persons. Anybody got anything tonight? Steve?
Just one thing I wanted to add for the elections. In addition to being patient, preparing for long lines, this is also kind of just as a PSA, what residents are playing the vote in person, to be kind and empathetic towards the volunteers and staff that are working at the polls that are handling long lines, be respectful of what the work that they're doing to help make the process as quick and seamless as possible, even if they can't do it due to COVID. So, just wanted to add that because I will say, just personally, I will be at the polls for the evening shift at the rec center. It was very cordial and pleasant at the primary, but obviously, it was much more quiet. There are fewer people there. And, you know, doing the numbers, it's probably going to be trying to get six voters in every minute if you want to keep it a steady flow. And that's half of what's the capacity. So, making sure that we don't rush people, but we also are respectful of those that are in line waiting to vote and not extending those lines to be too extensive.
Thank you. Cassandra?
Real quick, if you are waiting in these long lines, there will be Girl Scout cookies for sale, and I will be there with my troops feeling the voting polls, okay?
Close, right? The senior center and the rec center, they'll be at?
Yep. They'll be, we're going to be at the senior center from 4 to 6, my troop, on Tuesday, but there'll be troops there from 4 till 8 in both locations. As well as this weekend, I will be there. I'll be Saturday at United Bank selling cookies. Not just about me, but just Girl Scouts and Tallinn.
Thank you. Brenda?
Yes. Last town council group, we did at the one-year mark an update on our progress of polls. So, I'd like to make a request that we take a look at that again. And the Historic District Commission has requested a liaison from the town council to their commission. So, I think that's something we need to answer their question for. And that was it for now.
Okay. Mike, let's, I think we talked about getting something about the update of the goals on coming up. We've got some kind of more packed agendas, but we can get that out there by the end of the year. And then, we'll look at the other two. So, okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right. That gets us to 15. Public listed participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council. Three-minute limit. If you're on device, please raise your blue hand. If you're on the phone, it's star nine. When we call on you, please state your name and address for the record. And Dr. Willett, your hand is not up, but we are starting with you.
All right. Hey, I did it. I raised my blue hand.
You're good.
On cue, I think I got it.
You know, you're always putting the hands down. So, so?
I know, I know. It's a totally different place to be in. It's really awkward for me, frankly. But, you know, thank you for all the hard work you're doing and for giving your time late into the evening for the people of Tallinn here. Your stamina is impressive. You're matching the Board of Ed and its endurance. So, it's pretty amazing. So, I was just listening in on the meeting to see what the town council determination was going to be on the task force and the fields and ground agreement. When I heard what I thought was a question or a statement from Mr. Lubin that specifically referenced me, the superintendent, with respect to what has been presented regarding, I guess, mental illness in the municipality. So, I just put my hand up because I thought that was a question that, I was listening, and I thought there was a question for me. So, I took it down after I heard the comments. And I was just seeking to answer the question. I apologize. I assumed it was being, you know, asked genuinely. So, I thought I was going to answer that. But, but I respect procedure. So, I waited around to the, to the, to the three minutes here in the public session. To my knowledge, town council has not asked me to speak on this issue. I presented to the council at their request for other reasons in the past. Of course, I'm always happy to do it. I've had the privilege of listening in on community stakeholders and experts in your local prevention council. I've attended a bunch of the meetings myself and always found it to be a safe and welcoming environment. And, you know, always one that moved Tallinn forward with insightful perspectives and hard work. And I've been grateful for Human Services and the other departments and everything they've done. Regarding the question posed in public session regarding what I've done, I guess. And anytime, you know, my cell phone's out there. I put it in newsletters. It's on the website, Mr. Lubin. I've offered it to you before. I'm always happy to talk to you about that. So, if you ever have a question, you know, instead of public session, you can always give me a call. I'm always happy to talk. In short, you know, we've presented presentations to the community on OCD and arranged them for anxiety and drug prevention, trauma-informed practices, help for marginalized populations, mental health and social media workshops, internet safety, predator avoidance of sought-and-received grants, provided Tallinn an additional counselor through one of those grants. I personally taught four sections of classes, over 80 students at Tallinn Middle School, focused on drug abuse prevention, emotional regulation, relationships, helping teens avoid risky behaviors, and also working with smaller student groups and graduated students and groups to help provide that perspective, collected data. I presented that data publicly. Would be happy to do that for you. And worked to implement substance use and risky behavior inventory. So, currently, I'm working with school counseling staff to try to incorporate the Columbia Lighthouse Project and Virginia Threat Assessment to add to our current risk and risk assessment. So, you know, as a person committed 13 years of service to Tallinn, I appreciate authentic and direct communication, and I'm here for you. Let me know how I can help. As far as fields and grounds, the resurfacing TMS track was last done in 2002, 2003. THS was last done the summer of 2016. I believe from our meetings, it's recommended every eight to 12 years. And it costs about $150,000 for a basic oval, and an extra infield is about $180,000. The high school's got a little bit of a sub-course issue. There's a heave, I guess, at the 50-yard line. So, those are some of the things that, you know, that was out there. And so, that was one of the other reasons I was just taking in tonight to see if I could offer any help with that. So, that's it. Thank you. Really appreciate your hard work, and I hope you guys have a good evening after this long meeting.
I'm sorry, Dr. Willett. The track, can you say that again? The high school was, the track was resurfaced in 2002?
Summer of, summer of 2016, I believe, was the last time they did that. And the one at the middle school was, was the really old one, 2002, 2003. But the high school, yeah, the middle school's very old. In fact, it's, I think, well beyond the recommended eight to 12 years. It is 150 to 180, I believe. And the high school has a heave, which is part of, part of the, I guess, what's come on the radar is that heave at the 50-yard line.
So, the THS track was resurfaced in 2016. The middle school track was resurfaced in 2002 or 2003. Recommended every eight to 10 years. So, we're not looking at resurfacing the THS track? We're looking at the TMS track?
It's, I think it's eight to 12 years. And frankly, you know, at the end of the day, yeah, I mean, the TMS track desperately needs it. But I know somewhere in the next few years, obviously, the THS track is going to come on the radar, too. I think you had that out a few years there from what I was hearing. But that's, that's just the general stuff. We, you know, realize that these things are big projects, and they go out a few years. So, you know, when we pass it over and work with the town on it, we know that there has to be some kind of bonding and planning, and it has to be the right timing. So, you know, there's, there's no pressure per se. It's just kind of getting these things on the radar for conversation. So, you know, it's been great to work with Mike and everybody from the town. Scott, they've all been very helpful. And I, you know, we'll get it done one way or the other. But obviously, we know we have to make it timed right.
And the 50-yard heave, is that at the high school or the middle school?
That is at the high school track.
And is that the track or the field?
It's at the, it's in the 50-yard line, and it's just kind of pushing, I guess, pushing up. And so, you know, that's been, that has, that has gotten on the radar as something that, at some point, there needs to be addressed.
But is it the, is it the track that's heaving?
No, it's, it's at the 50-yard line, and I think it's just, it extends in that, that space that's pushing up on both. But the way I've got it written down here is the sub-course issue at THS, there's a heave at the 50-yard line. For me, you know, I don't think it's so noticeable that you'd walk up to it and go, my God, look at that. But I think they're noticing it on the field. I think there was some comment I heard tonight about, you know, tongue-in-cheek about tripping, which, you know, it, you know, these are the kinds of things that make it on people's radars who are down there looking at it very closely.
And I can also add on to that because I just did the tour on Thursday. There is a segment of the track itself, too, that has a little mound to it. I forget where the corresponding yard line is along the football, football field there, but Scott Lappin pointed it out to me. So, I think it's both, it's the, the track has also got an issue.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Willett, for that information.
No problem.
And I will put the, the, I'll, I'll put what you said about making a presentation to the town council on the mental health, the data that you have in that. I'll look at, trying to get that on here somewhere. Also, if it makes sense for us to do it before the task force or not, but I'll, Mike, don't let me forget that one.
Yeah, it does. It doesn't have to be. I'm here if you need, if you need, if you need anything, I'm here.
And, well, you know what? And if you could maybe send any information about the Columbia Lighthouse Project? I don't think I've ever heard of that. So, I'd be interested in finding out what that is.
Sure.
Anybody else for public participation? Got a few other people out there? Okay. Not seeing anybody, and it being 10:21. Steve, do your deal.
All right. Steve Jones entered a motion to adjourn at 10:21 PM.
Lou Lubin will second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
I'm an I, so that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night, and see you guys all at the polls on the 3rd.
All right.
See you on the other side.